Teresa Tomlinson. City Manager, Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District One. Glenn Davis, District Two. Bruce Huff, District Three. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem and District Four. Mike Baker, District Five. Gary Allen, District Six. Mimi Woodson, District Seven. Walker Garrett, District Eight. Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor. Skip Henderson, Post Ten at Large Counselor. Tony Washington, Clerk of Counsel. And City Attorney, Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your City Council.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the October 31st Meeting of the Columbus City Council. Happy Halloween. We're so glad to have you with us. This is a special called, actually, it's a work session, a regular called work session. Whenever there is a month with five Tuesdays, we get together to take a little deeper dive into some issues that are important to us. And so, we actually have a very long agenda today to talk about some subjects that we just need a little background and investigation on, and the staff will present that information here today. We want to go ahead and get started with the invocation, and I'm going to call Neil Richardson forward. Neil's the Chaplain at the Muskogee County Sheriff's Office. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Shall we pray? Father God, I just ask that you look on the hearts of these you've called to lead and give them the wisdom necessary to deal with the issues that face our community. And we boldly ask you not just to keep us going, but to grow us, to prosper us, and to make us the great city we deserve to be. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Neil, thank you so much, and thank you for what you do in this community, in your role as Chaplain, but also to serve the homeless population, too. You do such an incredible job, and is a huge resource for the city. When we get questions and people with concerns and interest, Neil's the go-to guy to field those calls. So, thank you, Neil, very much. All right. We've got, we don't have any helpers on the pledge of allegiance, but I know we can do it. So, stand with me, and let's pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Give yourself, okay. We have, we have a couple of, we've actually upgraded the system, it appears. So, I've got all kinds of perks up here, but none of the basics. And they're going to try to upload my basics, so we're going to have to go the old-fashioned way. I will not be able to seek counsel if you have something you'd like to say, so please just raise your hand until we get this resolved. But we're going to start with the consent agenda, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fay, and if you would, turn on Clifton's microphone, please.
Okay. Before we vote on these items, do you want to have Mr. Lomax in the text?
Well, he's actually number one on the consent agenda, so I didn't know. I mean, he's number one on the work session agenda.
Okay. We'll go on and vote on these items.
Yeah, it's just a few things.
I'll call them out. All right. First ordinance is ready for action, the zoning on Joyce Street.
We've got a motion and second for approval. Does anybody have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed?
Looks like that passed. The next item is an ordinance amending Chapter 20 on the parking fines, $40.
We've got a motion and second for approval of Item 2. Is there any discussion on this item? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed?
Okay, that passes. Item 3 is amending Chapter 16B to include grandparents and grandchildren in the definition.
Okay. We've got a motion and second for approval of Item Number 3. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed?
All right. Passes. The final item is the resolution required by state law in order to have Sunday sales on New Year's Eve. It's ready for adoption.
All right. We have a motion and second to approve the resolution. Any questions, discussion on this item? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor, please state aye. Are there any opposed?
None opposed.
Okay. We've got one in opposition.
Okay. One, two, three. That passed six to one.
Tony, you got it? Got what you need?
Okay. That does pass six to one, and that's all we have listed, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We've got the work session, so we'll turn it over to the City Manager if you'll turn on his microphone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good morning. We've got a number of topics on the work session agenda, and we are going to proceed through them in the order that they are listed. And if the meeting starts to get long, I will pick and choose what topics we will proceed with, and I'll need your help as to what you might want to hear today and what you might want to delay for another time. So, we'll start out as they are listed, and then we may do something different. So, with that, I'm going to call on John Williams, Deputy Chief Tax Appraiser, to come and provide the tax assessor's update that you've asked that they do at each meeting. John Williams.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Mr. City Manager, ladies and gentlemen, Council. As you know, John Williams, Deputy Chief Appraiser. It's a big day for us as a department. What I bring to you as an update is the fact that we have completed the review of every appeal that has been filed for this year. The, and I, if you'll forgive me, the paperwork that's being passed out was delayed this morning because we had to print our latest batch of 30-day notices. We had almost 1,400 30-day notices that are going to be mailed out today and tomorrow, so that printing of those notices delayed these, over these handouts that you're receiving. You may want to look forward. What is the, what's the title of that handout that you had? The handout you've just received is the second presentation that we're going to do this morning. So, the first one is on the screen, and again, I apologize for not having it handed out in front of you at this time. All these numbers were as of the end of the day yesterday. 7731 active appeals as of 5:00 PM. We had 10,906 appeals this year. So, I believe, Ms. Thomas, you were the one that asked that at the last meeting, what was the total number of appeals? And I said 10,700 approximately. I was off by a couple hundred. That's 11%, 7,731 is 11% of the taxable real property parcels here in the county. Again, that value in dispute is 2.3%. That hasn't changed in a while. The 7731, as I said, represents 100% of the parcel appeals have been processed, gone through, reviewed, and an initial decision has been made. 5580 or 72% of those were recommended for a reduction. 7,165 30-day notices have been sent out to date, and as I told you, we have another, I think it's 1,388, right at 1,400 30-day notices that are going to be sent out today and tomorrow. Of the ones that have already gone out, just over 50% of those have expired. And you may recall, the last time I presented this information to you, I just want to point out, that number was higher. When I ran the query, I made an error, and I ran the query for the entire number. So, that was about 80% last week. Again, that was an error. The actual number that have expired is 3,587, right at 50%. We have 1,900 appeals. 25% of the appeals are recommended, no change. We have 5%, I'm sorry, 5 appeals that are at the Administrative Manager Desk for Review, and another nine are at Division Manager, either my desk or one of my Division Manager's desks, for initial input. It could be something, yesterday, we had appraisers go out and do several site visits to make sure we have some information correct. That type of thing is what a DMR or Division Manager review is for. Say something about that 1,900 number, 25%. This week, we're going to spend some time going through those 1,900 one more time to make sure that, thank you, Betty, to make sure that we still feel the same way as when we went through them the first time. And just imagine going through 10,906 appeals, if you can. We learn things along the way. We get statistical information along the way as to, you know, what we may have, need to adjust more or adjust less. So, in the review of all these appeals, we've learned some things, and we want to take that knowledge and go through these no changes one more time. That'll be done a couple days this week, and then those will also be brought to the Board again, either as a no change or as a reduction. We have certified 252 appeals to the Board of Equalization. 14 of those have withdrawn as of yesterday, so that leaves 238 officially at the BOE at this time. As you know, and we pointed out last week, the Appeal Administrator in the Clerk of Superior Court's office is responsible for taking those from us and certification, and then setting those appointments, communicating with the taxpayers, communicating with the members of the BOE, et cetera. We do anticipate the first hearings to start, first week in December, and then we do anticipate, this is most important, that the BOE hearings will last through April of 2018. So, if you would, keep that in mind. Any questions on the appeals, the appeal update?
Anything, Council? Yes, and it does appear that we are up. So, Counselor Allen.
Could we go back, John, to the 3,587, the letters? Could you clarify that a little bit as far as the expiration?
It's the, that up, bigger number above it is the number of 30-day, what we call the 30-day notice. That is a letter that we send out when, for example, if we recommend to the Board of Assessors that we want to reduce your value. They approve that recommendation, and then a letter goes out to you. We call that a 30-day notice, because at the end of 30 days, that expires. So, that 3,587, those are the, that's the number of 30-day notices that have expired.
So, if, if in that 3,787, you were going to increase their tax, they have 30 days to file an appeal to the BOE? And that 30-day has expired, and they no longer can file that appeal?
If the 30 days has expired, they, their appeal period is over.
Okay. That's what I was, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Looks like that's all for now, John, on that.
Okay. The next presentation that we have, we were asked by the City Manager and his staff to bring to you kind of an update on the status of the department, what all these appeals mean, what's the impact, how does it impact us moving forward, and into next year's digest presentation, or preparation and presentation to the Tax Commissioner. So, Betty and I put together some facts for you yesterday, and go ahead and get that on the screen for you. The handout you first received is the handout for this presentation, so if we don't have it up on the screen anytime soon, we can go right into it. So, as I said before, the department processed and reviewed 10,906 total appeals. We anticipate the timeframe to complete the appeals, which means they go to the BOE, a value is rendered by the Board, and the value is settled. That's what we call complete. There's no more appeal. The value's established. We put that into our system. They get a new tax bill, if appropriate. So, that's what I mean by complete. At that time, and because of this historic number of appeals, we directed and dedicated all of our resources to reviewing those, processing and reviewing those appeals. So, we've been doing that for four months. As you would imagine, that four months of allocating all of our resources to appeals has caused our normal workload not to be accomplished. So, that's one of the reasons why I'm here for, with you today. Unless we address this delay in our annual work, it will preclude us from timely submitting our portion of the tax digest to the Tax Commissioner by June 1. If you recall, that June 1 was her date from earlier this year. In order for us to meet that June 1 date, we have to get our notices of assessment out in April. So, if you recall my last presentation, that April 2018 is when we expect the appeals to last until, well, we also have our notices of assessment that need to be going out at the same time. We do not have the resources to make both of those things happen. We must review the 2017 building permits and transfers of properties for 2018. Again, that would have to be done by that April 18 timeframe. Last year, there were 1,616 building permits. As of August 1, John Hudson has told us that we had 1,075 permits to date at that time. We anticipate about 2,000 building permits in total for 2017, based on his forecast for the next, for the last quarter. We currently have 1,688 transfers to review as well. So, that totals 3,688 parcels to review for sales and permits, and that has to be completed in that January through March of 18 timeframe. Some, but not all of these parcels are going to be wrapped up or reviewed in that one-third of the county that we've heard so much about. We review all the properties every three years. Simple math says, we'll review a third of the county every year. So, some of those parcels will include the 36, or the 3,688 will be included in some of those. As I just said, the stamp, state mandated review of a third of the properties in each, in our county and every county in Georgia every year, or all parcels in three years. We have 56,047 residential improved properties. Not included there is the vacant, unimproved properties, and I'm just dealing with residential right now in this presentation. Simple math says, a third of that number is 18,682. IAAO recommends, and IAAO is the International Assessing, Assessment, Administering Officials. Did I get that right, Betty?
International Association of Assessing Officers. I'm not a member, by the way, so that's why I don't know. They recommend a support, one staff person for every 3,000 to 3,500 parcels. So, we have just, in what I'm talking about right now, the third of the county to review every year, we have 1,882. So, when you separate that, divide it by three, that's 6,227 parcels per appraiser that we have dedicated to that role this year. Well, if you look at the IAAO recommendation, that's twice as much as an appraiser should do in a year. We're going to be asking our appraisers to do that in the first quarter. It's not realistic with the resources we have.
We've got Counselor Baker?
Yes, sir.
John, that's a good question. Assessment notices mailed April 1?
Yes, sir.
When do you, what's the Homestead, two questions, the Homestead filing deadline?
April 1.
So, you could mail an assessment before they file Homestead?
I'm sorry, sir.
How do you mail the assessments if somebody's filed a Homestead?
If I didn't say it, I should have said it the week of April 1. That's what I meant to say. Yes, sir. Mailed the week of April 1. It's, it's a very...
So, you account for the new Homestead filings in those assessments?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, you can mail till after that, really?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. One of the, one of the beauties of IAS World is that as soon as it's in the system, it's in the system across the departments.
Got you. Okay. And this is just real property, because business, personal property returns aren't even, deadline on those are April 1 as well, and I know that takes a while to process.
Yes, sir.
Right. So, this is just residential real?
I'm, I'm speaking of residential real at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
They, and I'll point out a little bit later in the presentation why we're talking about them alone.
Okay.
So, we have a staff of six residential appraisers to include the manager. Three, he and two other staff members are going to be working on these appeals. So, that leaves three of, the other three of his staff to work on permits, transfers, and one-third of the county review for the year. The math adds up. You can tell that even with IAA standards, we're over twice as much for each appraiser's workload, just considering the review of the properties. We're not even talking about permits and transfers. So, my point here in this is that we are in desperate need of some additional staff. Going back to the 2008 City Internal Audit Report, one of the things that it pointed out was that we had insufficient staffing in the Residential Division. That was in 2008. The 2013 Management Partners' Review of the Tax Assessors Department also identified insufficient staffing in the Residential Division. And I keep pointing that out, because the Commercial Division and the Personal Property Division were not identified as understaffed. We have the staff needed for those divisions, according to those two reviews, and according to our current workload. They were, these identified staff shortages were prior to this historic amount of appeals that we are now in the process of working through. So, as I've said many times, we need additional residential appraisers. The solution, or what we determined to be the best solution, and this is something that was pointed out a couple meetings ago, it may have been Mr. Allen or Mr. Baker, I'm not sure, I think it may have been Mr. Baker, talking about contracting out as opposed to hiring employees for a temporary type of a fix or a solution. We can contract with current vendor, Tyler Technologies, to provide the support without the need of a request or proposal or an RFP. Why is that important? Because RFPs take time. And if you think back to my timeline that we discussed, that April of 2018 is the time when this work needs to be done. So, we need to begin almost immediately with this other work, other than our appeals. So, selecting contractor Tyler is the best solution, do the, not only the time that it would take to RFP for others, they know the software we use, obviously, so their staff would know the software. We wouldn't have to train them. We wouldn't have to overwatch their initial work. It would be as if our guys were doing it, guys and guys, our staff. With approval, the, they have told us that they would be prepared to move forward beginning first week in January, after the holidays of 2018. Without that staff augmentation, we will not be able to complete the work required for the timely submission and compliance of the 2018 digest. And that is my last, no, moving forward. I apologize. In order to make sure this doesn't happen again, we need to increase the staff or augmentation to enable continuous maintenance of the software and the values in that software, and also meet the stamp, that state mandate of the third of a county every year. We should also, a separate item, this GIS position that is now in my department, we talked about this early in the budget planning. The position was moved to us per the hybrid model in 2016. IT was to fund that position in 2016, I'm sorry, in 2017, with the understanding that the Tax Assessor's Office and Department would fund it for 2018. Because of budget constraints required, we were not able to fund that position in the Tax Assessor's Office in 2018. So, Council directed IT and the GIS section to fund it for 2018, with the understanding that we were going to come forward mid-year and request for that change of funding from our budget for that position. And I've got a document here that I could read to you. Didn't put it in the presentation, it's a bit wordy, but all the things that Sandra Rousseau does in our department, she, from my perspective, as her boss, she's almost one of a kind. She started with us and learned about what we do, and then educated herself and promoted herself into GIS. She's been back with us since '16, and she does a fantastic job. She does things that we can't do. And there are a lot of departments and counties that have GIS augmentation within the Tax Assessor's Department. So, keeping her there is an extremely wise move on our part. Now, we're just asking or letting you know that we need to find the money and the budget to move that payment for her position to our budget to free up IT, so they don't carry her anymore. And I'm sure Forrest will echo that sentiment loudly. I believe that is my last slide. Yes, I will take all of your questions.
Okay. And so, John, you're making that request today for what exactly, if you could tee it up, just what exactly is the request, and what do we need to act on today?
The request is to provide funding or allow funding for a contract to bring in personnel that will do the field work necessary to review that 3,600-plus permits and transfers, and also to help us with the one-third re, review of the county that we have to do this year. They have given us a price, and that's a price per parcel, that depending on, and again, those numbers I gave you are my best estimate. You know, we don't know how many permits and transfers we'll have for the fourth quarter of 2017, but based on history, that 3,600-plus number is, seems to be well-established. We need those contracted staff members to do that review for us. They will, if necessary, if it's a new house, they'll, what we call strap the house, they'll measure the house, they'll gather all the information about the house and bring it back to us and put it in IAS World for us. That's one of the benefits of having IAS staff to do that. They know the software. They'll put it in there for us, and they will maintain that and then bring that to us, and our appraisers will finalize the value for those properties and then bring that to the Board of Assessors in the normal flow of business. So, what we're asking for is the funding for that contract work, and that will be an additional, and I don't work with contracts, but what I understand, and you may know, that will be an additional contract as opposed to an amendment.
Well, and Madam Mayor and Counsel, let me just say that when it was communicated to me through one of my deputy city managers, that the situation with Tax Assessor's Office, and having directed all available resources over the last four month, months to review and appeals, and unless they receive additional staff support, that there was, there would be a delay in the tax digest, getting to the Tax Commissioner's Office, and my man went through what we just went through, and I immediately told the deputy city manager, they need to come to council, and, and they need to tell council directly their current situation, and if it's not addressed, where they're going to be, and, and then need to talk about options. And so, I got that call last week, and I immediately wanted to put it on the agenda, because you need to hear it, and the public need, they need to hear it. And so, that is why he's here today, and so, because this is a work session, I did want him to share the situation and then talk about the options, and that is, they could ask for the approval of new staff that would go on city payroll, or they could ask to contract it out, and as he has indicated, it makes sense that we would do it with Tyler. They have the background, the experience, and they can do it, and, and they can hit the ground running immediately. And so, I wanted you to hear this and then have discussion, and then provide some direction. Do you want new city staff? Do you want to contract it out? Does it make sense to you to go with Tyler? If we go through an RFP, it could take 90 to 120 days, you know, unless we find a way to shore it. to shorten that, but I think your April 1st, 2018 date is critical, and we are upon the Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Year's holidays. And so, we wanted to have that discussion, and if there is direction that you're fine with Tyler, bring back some numbers to discuss, then we can obviously do that, and then we can go from there.
We have, excuse me, we have Counselor Allen.
Mayor, first, I got two questions. First, if someone is in a position where they have not heard from the assessor's office on an appeal, what should they do?
Well, they can always communicate with us, call us.
So, there are some out there in the community that have not heard?
Yes, sir.
It's not just, okay.
That's correct.
So they just need to call your office and talk through the, what they need to do from there?
That is always an option. The public access site has an appeals section that they can look on the status of their appeal there as well. That will give them an indication if it's still active, or if it's being reviewed, or if a letter's been sent out, it will all be there in that section of the public access site. That's publicaccess.columbusga.org.
Okay. Thank you. The, the other, well, what I'd, what I'd like to suggest to council, my position is I'd like for us to consider contracting this out. And the reason is, hiring new employees is going to add a lot of cost to the city budget. So I'd like to ask the city manager if he could help me kind of walk through where we are. This goes back to lack of communication between us and the board of tax assessors last year and earlier this year, and how we got into all this situation we're in now. We just took out a $9 million, nine-plus million dollar LAN, was that what it's called?
TAN, tax allocation.
TAN, which gives us the ability to basically borrow money if we fall into a certain situation. We also have been asked, I understand, by the Muskogee County School District to help them offset costs because we do not have the cash flow coming in, in October, and we have to wait till probably end of December or end of the year before we receive all of the tax flow that we normally receive. So, we're in a situation where, in my opinion, we don't, we just don't have the funds to start hiring employees. So, my recommendation, my motion, or I guess, for us to consider would be to contract it out.
And Counselor Allen, I would say to you that I agree with that, because once we get through what we're dealing with and they get caught up, then that agreement where we've contracted it out can go away. And then you can take a fresh look at whether you want to add additional staff to the tax assessor's office.
Exactly. And the other thing is, as I think you mentioned, or city manager mentioned, they can hit the ground running, there's no learning curve or training curve there, so.
That's correct. The time it would take just to hire people would push us too far back.
So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We have Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Williams, I still haven't heard a figure of how much money we're talking about.
$30 a parcel is the number that we've been given from Tyler. So when you, that could range from $90,000 to $110,000. And that's 3,000 to 30, my number in the presentation, I believe, is 3,662 or 3,600-plus. That would be at that 110,000.
And is this for only those, those that you're talking about augmenting the three appraisers who will go out and do the appraisals, the 6,227 parcels?
They will augment those three appraisers that are doing that work, so it's that, that number, which are appeals and property transfer sales, but it's also that one-third of the county number that, there's two numbers. So the number you just read me, I believe, is that one-third of the county number, the other number is the, the permits and transfers. So there's two different numbers in that presentation.
So we're looking at, at 6,200 parcels generally, rounded off?
Yes, ma'am.
And up to 2,000 new permits and from GIS, right? So we're talking about 8,000 roughly?
Um.
Here's, here's my problem.
Yes, ma'am.
You've come to us and asked us to approve this hiring, however we do it, whether we do it, hiring people on our payroll or contract it out.
Yes.
I don't have any numbers that we're talking about.
Correct.
I will tell you that the hair on the back of my neck went straight up when you said Tyler.
Yes, ma'am.
And part of that is because of all of the things that have been going on with Tyler I, I have, I have some real concerns about doing what you're asking us to do. The, the other piece of this, I have some concerns about doing this mid-year. This is not our normal way of doing business, and it, it's a little concerning, concerning to me that, quite frankly, I don't think we have enough information to do that. The other piece of it is, I don't know, at this point, does this, does this figure that you're talking about include moving the position from GIS to, I mean, IT to tax assessor's office?
No.
No, it does not?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No, that, I believe, Pam could correct me, Mr. City Manager. I'm just, I'm identifying that now.
No, I think you're just making them aware, because we're going to have future discussion on the GIS position.
Has that, has that position been fully funded in the FY18 budget in the IT department?
Yes.
So that if it is moved to the tax assessor's office, will the money move from?
Well, let me correct that. It's, it's an IT position, and that position belongs to IT, and we were allowing that person, we were letting that person help the tax assessor's office to get them through what they're dealing with, and, and at some point, that position has to be committed fully back to IT. And so they do need their, that position, and Forrest totally is going to talk about that later.
So, we will be adding a position to the budget, is that what you're saying?
Well, yes. If you recall during this last budget process, we asked, because of the budget situation, that you not add the position, and we would just work it out and allow IT person, I sat there at that table and said that, we would allow IT to continue to assist them, knowing that we would not be able to do that indefinitely, but we did not want to try and create a new position at that time.
And so are you coming back to us mid-budget to ask us to fund another position?
No, I am not. What, what I would do is, during the next budget process, is ask that you fund that position for the tax assessor's office.
In the FY19 budget?
That's correct. But we want you to be aware and.
I just want to be sure that, that I know what we're talking about.
Yeah, and I know that you have to remember my saying that, and I think I said it for the police department as well, if you remember, because IT has a person that the police chief wanted funded, and we said we would allow the IT person to work with the police department until a, a future date.
Ms. Williams, and our, our Mr. City Manager, are you asking us to make a decision on this today?
No, no. Let me tell you what I came to you for, and I tried to explain that earlier. I wanted you to be aware, because when they, I got the phone call, I don't want to be the only one who knows this, and I want you to be aware, and we want to have a strategy now to avoid having to deal with this in 2018. And so I want you to be aware and know the options. And, and hear from you, if you are okay with the option of outsourcing, then we will come back to you at the next council meeting, as we normally would do, and say, you know, here's the number of parcels that we anticipate, and $30 a parcel, and here's what the cost will be, and here's how long it would last, and total cost, and then where the money would come from. And we will do that at the next meeting if you have no issue with contracting out so that we can move forward and move forward now with it, rather than go through a very lengthy RFP process.
So you're asking us today to approve the contracting out?
I'm asking you today if, you can tell us verbally whether you are okay with moving forward with contracting out, and then we will bring you all the pertinent information that goes with that.
Okay. I will tell you then, I am not comfortable with that because I don't have the pertinent information.
Okay, that's fine. We'll bring it at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on, we've got Counselor Barnes.
I'd like to thank you for your very thorough presentation. And I know we're going through some birth pangs with all of this issue, but I want to commend you and your staff for pulling the rabbit out of the hat, and as we say in the Army, making it happen, because that's the bottom line, is that you made it happen. We don't look backwards, we look forward. The second thing is, I've learned from my Army training is that when you're in an untenable position, you do what you need to do to accomplish the mission. So I second it, what Counselor Allen, because I don't think we're in a, we're really not in a, a position to do otherwise but support this year. And it makes sense because Tyler Technology has the personnel, there's no lag period, we can get on it and meet the deadline. Everything else, and to me, right now, in, in this discussion, that is the most important thing. Talking about IT and all, we can deal with that at a later date.
That's right.
And if need be, if we're in that much of a crunch, we can just continue on with what we're doing, it'd be tight with the IT personnel, but that shouldn't even occur in this particular issue right now. We should just be concerned with your timeline. And thank you again for your good presentation.
Thank you, sir.
We have Counselor Henderson.
One of the questions I was going to ask is if we could hold off a vote of support, just as Counselor Thomas was saying, I, I don't think we have a choice probably, really, other than to use Tyler or some, somebody that we're able to use in, in the interim to help fix this year's issue. But I would like to see the numbers. I'd like to see the numbers, what it's going to cost, because my quick math, I thought I heard you say you were estimating around 100 to.
Well, 3,000, and it's 90, 4,000 is 120. I said 90 to 110.
Okay. Cause I, in my quick math, with the three people that we've got, leaves us about 8100 parcels, and that's closer to a quarter of a million dollars. So, and I know my, I don't understand the system, so.
Right.
That's just based on the numbers that you have on the, on the update. So I think it'd be important to find out what it would cost to add two appraisers full-time, because we may have to know as we go forward. It'd be good information to have if we, if we're asked to consider this, and this becomes the new normal, and we're having to deal with this every year. I'd also like to ask you to, let's go, maybe we should go ahead and do an RFP for additional services as needed, won't help this year, but we can have that as an option going forward, and it might be that they can do it cheaper than Tyler. And lastly, without picking a scab off old wounds, I would ask Tyler, doesn't hurt to ask, if they will give us some type of relief on their normal cost, because I still believe that they have some culpability in some of the mountain of work that you guys were forced to deal with. They never came out and said it, but I'm, in my linear thinking, there is one of two issues that generated a lot of these challenges. One was either the system didn't work. Well, I think it's been proven that the system does work. But if that's the case, then some of the information, not all, but some of the information was erroneous, as it was entered in on the front end. So either way, I think they have some part, it's, in my mind, it's almost impossible for them to deny they have some culpability in the processes that took place, and I think it, it bears asking the question, if in light of some of that, they're willing to help us through this year, because this year was created, in my mind, partly because of, of the manner in which those numbers were entered and, and enforced a lot of issues that y'all had to deal with across the board.
That, that estimate of 90 to 120 is based on the permit and transfer number, not the one-third of the county number.
And, and Mayor, I just want to be clear again, I did not come here today, today for a vote. This is a work session and wanted to have discussion. I have not even had time to meet with them. I'm operating from a phone call.
Sure.
And so I just want you to be clear, this is very new information to me. And we're operating on a phone call, but I, I want to say to Counselor Henderson, I love the idea of an RFP, and much like we do with architects and engineering services, we have three on, through an RFP process on a list at all times that we can call an architect, or we can call engineering services. We need to do that with appraisers. And so I think that's an excellent idea, and so I do agree with moving forward and moving forward now and going with Tyler. We will bring you all of the information at the next meeting, to include the cost of hiring in-house personnel to do it, the cost to include benefits versus contracting or outsourcing it. So, we'll bring to you, but our recommendation would, will be that we outsource it and that we go with Tyler. They have the experienced people they can put on the ground immediately, but we will have the conversation with them about some relief. And so we'll come back next week with all of that.
We have Counselor Garrett.
Thank you for coming today, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. We do appreciate your service, and we appreciate the board's service. I think the fact that 72% have been recommended for reduction, y'all have been working really hard, and I bet there are a lot of happier, much happier taxpayers out there. But Counselor Henderson, kind of, I definitely agree with you about the whole Tyler thing. I think we should get some sort of relief, whether it be from $30 to $28 or whatever it may be. Y'all have done way more work than y'all have had to do in the past, and I think there's definitely some sort of, I guess, an impact that happened because of the software. I did have a couple of questions about your earlier presentation too, though. The 252 appeals to the Board of Equalization, does that include appeals by taxpayers? Or when you say certified, does that mean just ones y'all are appealing?
No. Those certified means we, my term will be handed over to.
Okay.
The Board of Equalization. So it's all appeals that have gone out, that, those are the ones that are currently certified to me.
Okay. And I know you said you were mailing out some more notices.
Yes.
Do y'all have any idea what you're expecting, I guess, based off what you've seen so far, where people are appealing to the Board of Equalization, how many more we, we can anticipate?
Well, it's been about 10 to 15% of those that continue, what we call continue to the BOE, so I haven't done the math on that.
Sure. 1,200 more?
Something like that.
Okay. And if we do move forward with Tyler, just something that I would ask, and I guess this would be more geared towards the city attorney, but if we could try and put in some more favorable language, I guess, to us as far as if we foresee damages somehow, you know, for instance, having to employ the Board of Equalization more, or having an unusually high amount of appeals, something to protect the city, so we've got guaranteed protection there, that'd be great if there's anything we can work with them on. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. John, I would like for us to, if you could, have somebody send to council a step-by-step process of, if someone calls us and says, "I haven't heard anything," then we could direct them to your website and then give us a step process they would need to go through in order to find the information they need, or call the person they need to call. If you could give us a step-by-step on that. And then the other thing would be, it, it seems to me it might be a good idea to have them post something on our website so that it's a little easier to maneuver through for those that have not heard anything on their appeal. If they could just, you know, click here and it'll send you to the step-by-step process.
Several weeks ago, we did an interview, I did an interview on CCGTV that had a PowerPoint that specifically. that specifically went step-by-step to do exactly what you're talking about doing. So I'll just send council that presentation, so you have it as well, it's out, it's out there on CCGTV, I'm not sure where, I haven't seen it, but it's out there, my mother says she couldn't find it, she watches all these things, so.
Okay.
I don't know exactly where it is, but I'm-
We can make it more prominent.
It's website, and you do, it's out there now.
Yeah.
But I'll send that to you.
That'd be good.
Thank you.
All right, well, I think that concludes your presentation, John.
Yes, it does.
Okay, good, well, I had something I wanted to say, I'm so appreciative of the tone and tenor of the conversation today, and join with the others in saying that you have done such a remarkable job, you and your staff, Betty, thank you. Also, we have with us a few members of the Board of Tax Assessors, we have Chester Randolph, the Chair, and also Pat Hunter, and the gentleman who's the new appointed-
Matt Moorfield.
What is it?
Matt Moorfield.
Matt Moorfield, thank you, and of course Randy Lomax, the lawyer for the Board of Tax Assessors, that is an independent authority. I wanted to mention something that didn't get any coverage here in Columbus that I recall seeing, and so maybe council's not aware, the citizens may not be aware, but Fulton County had their tax digest rejected on Thursday. They had their tax digest rejected because they had a similar situation, though not a county-wide assessment, but they were making broad-scale adjustments to bring in their valuations in line with reality. And there was great political backlash, because as I've said before, don't mess with people's freedom, don't mess with their taxes, don't mess with their kids. And so, of course, you start messing with valuations and taxes, and you're going to get the type of political blowback. But during this whole conversation, it was everything from Tyler and software to all kinds of things, we too proposed that the 2016 valuations be frozen. And had we done that, our tax digest would have been rejected. And just a little bit about what that means, Atlanta, this article here, Atlanta is desperately trying to get a hearing, they're trying to get a judge to set their valuation so they can send out their tax bills. Right now, they're stopped by law, they can't send out their tax bills. And in the past, a few times this has happened in Georgia history, it's taken many months, even up to a year, for a court to rule as to what the tax valuations are, so a community can send out their tax bills, one year without property taxes. Now, I hope Atlanta's has expedited, I don't know what judge they're going to get, and what hearings they're going to have, and who might object, and how many proposals will be put on the table for the judge to look through, and how long it'll take that judge to review and determine what the valuations are going to be. But you can hear the concern we had here with just having to get a tax anticipation note for forty-five days. Imagine a year, or six months, or four months. And there was an incredible amount of pressure, and the reason why I bring this up, a lot of people probably say, "Yeah, you know, it all worked out, just don't bring it up, you know, let's move on." But the interesting thing about justice is it's always delayed, you know, there's a saying that says, "Justice delayed is justice denied," right? It's always delayed, and in that sense, it's always denied. And so there was a period of time in which the Board of Tax Assessors, and under the advice of Randy Lomax, and our city attorney, Clifton Fay, and Lucy Scheftel, were stringlessly advising us not to go that course. Now, it was something we wanted to do as elected officials, because we want to bring relief to our citizens and to our constituency. And so there were no thanks at the time. There was a protest downstairs, you were picketed, you were called out online and social media, your names were published, people were encouraged to contact you and force you to do something you knew was not legally appropriate or correct. You know, Randy, as a lawyer, I find it amazing that people think that the ability to read a sentence grammatically correct is the equivalent of practicing law. I, you know, I love that. If simply reading a sentence was the practice of law, there wouldn't be the need for the three years and the, and the bar exam, and the years and years and decades. I think people do that because experts like you make it look so easy. So they think, "Well, anybody can do that." Well, not anybody can do it, apparently, because Atlanta's in a big fat mess. Their school district is scrambling, and if you've read some of the stuff that's, even if the judge does expedite it, they're going to be in real trouble. And so one of, you know, one of the authorities that I have under the charter as mayor, is that I am the public spokesperson for the city. And so as the public spokesperson of the city, I want to thank you, the Board of Tax Assessors, and Randy Lomax, for your expert counsel, for standing steadfast in the face of unbelievable, unfair, political pushback, for some of the personal assaults you had to undergo. I am so very sorry. It's rare that somebody in your circumstance, I say a volunteer board, you do receive a stipend because of the extraordinary amount of training and so forth you have to do, but it's very rare that just an average citizen can withstand that amount of public scrutiny and public pushback. We sign up for it, but it's extraordinarily rare, and so, again, I want to say that, just me personally, to be as dramatic as I feel about it, I thank God for you, because I don't think that anybody would imagine, can accurately imagine, what would have happened if our tax digest had been thrown out. I don't know if there's any lender that would have funded the city, not because Columbus isn't a fantastic city, but Atlanta's not sure they're going to be able to get anybody who's going to fund them for what they've got to go through. And so, you know, half of being a leader is avoiding disaster, and nobody appreciates you when you avoid disaster because the disaster didn't happen, so they don't know what they've been saved from. And so, thank you. I do have two formal referrals, I'm going to have to ask Clifton to draft a letter for my signature to the authority, and of course, it will lead with my appreciation for your service, and what you've done for the citizens, and standing steadfast against that political pushback. But one, I'd like to make a referral that you adopt as a policy, to have a county-wide tax assessment once every ten years, no later than once every ten years. And I'd also like to make a referral that at any time, if there is a one-hundred percent increase or more of any parcel, it is not due to improvement or construction, but simply an increase in valuation, that it be reviewed and approved by the chief appraiser and by the Chair of the Board, or something along those lines. I'd like you to consider that, because I believe, and I'm no software expert, but I frankly think that what happened to us was a result of not having done a county-wide tax assessment for thirty-five years. I think it was the result of the anomalies that we did not know of or truly appreciate. When all that information was loaded up, the wave, the tidal wave of those anomalies resulting from those thirty-five years, we just overloaded our system. It could not be humanly dealt with in the timeframe in which we had, and I'm not sure we appreciated the number of anomalies going into it. And I don't think that we appreciated the political passion and impact of what those anomalies and the overloading of the system would bring. And I think all that resulted in, obviously, anger, concern, and fear on everybody's part, so I think if we can build into the system a ten-year review, and a review of any valuation of over a hundred percent that's not the result of improvement or some sort of construction, I think that may be two safeguards to prevent this from happening.
Just to clarify, initially you said a ten-year revaluation, and then-
No, 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 county-wide, independent, independent county-wide assessment, like we had this time.
Revaluation, as opposed to reassessment.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
Whatever you had this time.
When you said ten-year review, at closing, I wanted to clarify, so.
Okay, yeah.
What we did this time, do it every ten years.
Right, you're supposed to do it every three years, obviously, and you do it, but that's always limited, and it's sort of checking for outliers, and I think we've heard, and I, you know, you're welcome to repeat yourself, but I think we all know that process. But an independent outside revaluation, make sure we are where we should be, that we're clipping off these anomalies as they occur and grow, so that we don't have this onslaught of so many things going on. And it just, it helps council make decisions about zoning, get things straight with our ten-year comprehensive plan, if we have these zoning anomalies where all these residents live in these industrial areas, we could have taken care of that if we'd known four, five years ago, eight, ten years ago. So anyway, I hope you'll take that under advisement, and I'll try to get the letter out this week. So again, thank you all, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I think that concludes our number-one agenda item, moving along.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next, we have Mr. Peter Bowden, President and CEO of Columbus Convention and Visitors Bureau. He's going to talk to us about Columbus 2025, Columbus, Georgia branding. Mr. Peter Bowden.
Great, great, thank you all, good morning. Let's talk about community branding for a few minutes. One of my goals this morning is to take what normally is a forty-five-minute presentation and boil it down to ten to fifteen minutes. So that means we're going to hit just the highlights of what this community branding initiative is. This came about through one of the strategic items from the Columbus 2025 program of work initiated by the Greater Columbus Chamber of Commerce. So the branding process began as a request for proposal for companies that specialized in research-based branding, place branding, or community branding. A panel was convened to vet those responses, and Chandler Thinks was selected. This is a company with a national reputation for place branding, such as Columbus was looking for. There are four phases in the process of branding under the Chandler Thinks model. We are currently in phase four, which is engagement, both on the local, regional, and national levels. Some of the highlights from the research includes interviews with community stakeholders, focus groups that include Fort Benning, community surveys, external surveys, et cetera. Brand truths emerge from that research. This is where the team at Chandler Thinks takes that research, and it's a quite lengthy document, and they begin to boil that down into items that they can use to help us arrive at our community brand. So brand truths emerge from that. Again, highlighting some of those, that Columbus's relationship with the river drives its reputation. There's a synergy associated with the original city in Columbus, which is our uptown. Fort Benning and the military certainly have a key influence on our community. There's a drive for economic and cultural progress, so much so that it's actually a part of our culture, part of our DNA. And Columbus does things in big and bold ways, and we are known for thinking and doing big things. The next step is the brand platform, that is crafted from, again, from the research. It focuses on a target audience, it looks at geography, and it describes the brand promise, and that is that we're urban culture and outdoors encourage discovery. And then what is the benefit from that brand promise? And the promise is that there is adventure here in Columbus. So what is a brand story? The story does these things, if nothing else. It acts to bring the community together, it defines the personality of the community, it helps identify the quality of life that we appreciate here in our city, it shapes the conversation. The brand story also reminds us that knowing that everyone has a different story, every citizen has a different story, but there is a common thread with all of those stories. And this is Columbus's brand story. Everyone is familiar with the It Cities in the South, they're on every list. Columbus is ready to break into that list. We're not a backwater, we're a city of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand strong, our downtown, our uptown thrives day and night. Brick-and-still buildings of the past now make up our renovated twenty-first-century skyline. Instead of our urban river you're afraid to touch, our Chattahoochee invites you in. Our arts and culture entertainment surprise, our world-class museums inspire, outdoor activities abound, government and business work together to make it happen. We believe in big, bold ideas that impress while revering our past. That's why around every corner, Columbus proves we do amazing. Think about that for a few minutes as we move on. So the creative team at Chandler Thinks got together, they presented a dozen ideas for what the mark might be, taking that tagline, "We do amazing," and come up with something that was inspirational. The panel reviewed dozens of ideas, rejected most of them, and then began to provide that, the inspiration for the final word. One of the key elements that emerged were some of those things that we had fallen in love so much with, with the Frank Martin Pedestrian Bridge, the canopies, the color of those canopies. So this is where we are today. Columbus, Georgia, we do amazing. So again, spend a few minutes looking at the artwork, the tagline, how those elements all work together. And let's talk about the typeface of Columbus. It's purposely made up of different fonts, because our community is made up of different people. But when they all come together, it makes the community, and the same thing happens here, you have different typefaces that have come together to form the word Columbus. The blocks under Columbus, Georgia, could represent our skyline, they could also represent building blocks. But most importantly, the inspiration is from the pedestrian bridge I mentioned just a moment ago. The colors of the river, Coca-Cola, the military, the red bricks that we are, most of our buildings are downtown are known for, for repurposing purposes. It's also a skyline. And the tagline, "We do amazing," has a little bit of an attitude. It speaks that the fact that Columbus does bold things, that we are not afraid of thinking big. The mark and tagline also speaks to that new generation that was identified within the 2025 program of work, the millennials, the Generation Z, those new leaders that are beginning to emerge on the horizon that we have to, that we have to appeal to as a city. Also, keep in mind that the tagline, "We do amazing," is basically an incomplete sentence as well. And what that means is we do amazing art, we do amazing engagement, food, we do amazing music, we do amazing quality of life, we do amazing adventure, we do amazing public-private partnership, sports, we do amazing economic development, and the list can go on and on, depending on who we're talking to. So here are some examples of how the mark is being used. The development authority is using "Choose Columbus, Georgia, we do amazing." Logo treatment at the bottom of the screen shows how the Chamber of Commerce may use the new tech, the new branding. And then my organization is also going through a rebranding process, we're going to be known going forward as Visit Columbus GA. So we've taken some of the elements from the brand, the community brand, and incorporated that into our new logo treatment, making it fun and bright and exciting, but at the same time, keeping and respecting the new community brand. On the backside of our business cards, we are respectful to the new community brand, and we decided we wanted to own the color orange, because it's such a fun and happy color. But this also illustrates how any organization, business, can adapt the community brand for their purposes of telling their story. As I mentioned a moment ago, we're in phase four of the engagement, and we're in the beginning of a grassroots initiative to build advocacy and support. We will be looking and working with a local public relations and marketing firm to launch that campaign, again, under the Columbus 2025 initiative. Here are just some thought starters of how we might use "We do amazing" in our DNA into our public spaces, the street banners, public benches where people can gather, perhaps on the pedestrian bridge, excuse me, on the bridge connecting the Riverwalk at the Eagle and Phoenix. Little placeholder signs at restaurants, "We do amazing food." Or perhaps in retail, where we have amazing place for shopping. And one of my favorites is a piece of public art, and I'm really hopeful that someone will latch on to this and make this happen, is that you'd have a piece of public art somewhere in our city that, with the word "Amazing," with the word "amazing," and it becomes a selfish station. So when someone stands in front of that piece of art, someone snapped that, that Instagram or that Facebook page, that photo, it forms the word "I am amazing," and that individual begins to embed themselves in their amazing story for our community. Again, another example of perhaps a public art, a place on our Riverwalk where people can gather and come together. The external campaign is underway where we have been pitching that story to our, to our stakeholders. Here's a brief list of some of those publications. We've had over, almost a quarter of a million impressions just in the short time that this campaign has been underway. So we're super excited about that. There's a website that's up, Amazing Columbus GA. This will be, continue to be built out as we roll out this, the local grassroots initiative and storytelling. And this will also give our citizens an opportunity to tell their stories and have these stories live on this website as we lift up the new community brand. The most important thing about the brand, and this is something that Chandler, Steve Chandler and his team drilled into us from day one of the branding process, that the community brand really is not about the mark or the tagline. It's the essence of the story that I read to you just a few minutes ago. It's about being a city that's ready to break into that list with amazing arts and culture. It's a city with its eye on the future. This is what it's really all about, that Columbus is an amazing place, and we do amazing things because we have amazing people. And the next stage is the engagement phase that we're entering into needs to include real, authentic experiences. And we'll be looking for citizens, businesses, et cetera, to be a part of that. Again, it's more than a logo. It's about everyone and everything always telling a story. That's, that is our presentation on community brand. We're excited about this. The chamber has already begun that process, engagement, as I said, we are as well. And we are meeting regularly with the local firm now to take us through the next phase of community engagement.
All right. Well, Peter, it looks like there's no questions. Thank you for all your hard work. We've already started to adopt it in some of our email signatures, and it's on my card and that type of thing. So, so we're doing our part. Mr. City Manager, did you?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, I wanted President CEO.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The mic was not.
Yeah, I didn't do anything to it.
But I wanted Mr. Bowden to come and, and make sure that he shares the method, means, or of how this came about and where it comes from and how it's being spread throughout, used throughout the community. And as the mayor indicated, many city departments have already started to use it. It's on our website. If you go there, you'll see Columbus, Georgia, we do amazing. We are going to start to transition the logo on our vehicles. We're not going to just replace all the logos, but as we would have to put a new logo on an old vehicle, or we get new vehicles, we want to go with the new logo. And so you'll have both, what progress has preserved, and you remember, you know that logo. So you'll see that logo continue to be out there for some time until we phase in Columbus, Georgia, we do amazing, over a period of time, perhaps years. So we'll see, but we are moving in that direction. So if you start to see the new logo on the vehicles, just wanted you to know that we're transitioning, and we're just not going to do them all at one, one time. But we're excited about the, the new brand, and just wanted you to have an opportunity to ask Mr. Bowden any questions.
All right. We have Counselor Thomas.
Good morning, Mr. Bowden. I was particularly interested in the, some of the pictures that you showed of how this can be used. The, the seating, it looked, looked like those boxes, those colorful boxes of different sizes would make great seating, particularly in our uptown area, when people want to just sit and watch the river or, or whatever they want to do. And I'm assuming that, well, maybe, maybe I shouldn't assume, that uptown and all of those typical partners that we have are also supporting this in addition to the chamber and, and to Visit Columbus GA.
Absolutely. There have been a number of presentations already. Probably the most widespread was during an inner-city visit recently to Pittsburgh. A lot of that leadership saw or were exposed to the brand. But also, a lot of those organizations were part of the branding research and some of the focus groups that we discussed as, as Chandler Thinks and his team immersed themselves in the community. So, very much so.
And so if, if some of our folks are interested in making that happen, they could contact you or the chamber or uptown or whoever happens to be in charge of that particular piece of property.
Well, exactly. I mean, probably to save a few phone calls, they're welcome to call our office at the, at Visit Columbus GA, and we'd be glad to redirect them or help them maybe directly with those requests. But as leading, heading up this, the branding initiative, it's been my responsibility as the volunteer for 2025, so I'd be happy to field any phone calls and to assist in any way.
And I appreciate what you do, Mr. Bowden. You, you represent our city very well and put us out there, and, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Peter, that concludes comment. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, next, I've got Director Rick Jones of our Planning Department. He has some DOT people here with him as well, and he is going to be talking about adaptive signal taming project at Beaver Run Road. Mr. Rick Jones.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity of being here this morning. Want to share a little bit of history about why we're here this morning, and then I want to get to the real, real meat of the conversation from that. We all know the issue in dealing with traffic in the, in the community is dealing with the signals themselves in terms of how they're coordinated or not coordinated, or at least we're being accused of not being, having coordinated at times. We have a particular issue out there at Beaver Run and Flat Rock and Kitten Lake where all that traffic merges at one time. And there are times that traffic is backed up in both directions for at least half a mile. It can be particularly on peak hour times on a Friday or even on a Monday. It doesn't happen just in the afternoons. It also happens in the mornings, and it also happens at noon as well. Well, the issue is, in most cases would have been, let's go out there and see what we can do about widening that roadway or changing the configuration or something. But in honest, in all honesty, when you look at that, and I meant to bring an aerial to show you again, to remind us all, there's not a whole lot, much, much more we can do out there. The, everything is built up around that intersection, and so the cure, probably if we top a real cure from, from what we've done in the past, would probably be worse than the, than the actual disease in this case. So we have to come up with something a little more innovative, a little more thought-provoking. Sometime back, we had, had an outside firm come to us and, and share with us information about some signals and so forth, and about some advanced technology that would help do that. The reason I'm here this morning is because the, through our MPO funds, we were getting ready to spend some dollars toward doing just that, as more of a test case than anything else. That's when GDOT came back to us and said, "We have a program we think you'd be interested in that could, can help us, and also at the same time, save you some, some funding involved with all that." I'm happy this morning to introduce to you Kate Sharon. She is the state signal engineer for GDOT and for us as well. And she has brought along with her, our, her, their consultant, one of their consultants anyway, is Sean Coleman, who is from Kimbley Horn. They're going to come this morning and explain to you what they're, what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish. Also, I think we'll have some good information for you in terms of what's, what's going to involve for us to actually implement this if we decide to go forward with it. Keep in mind, the area we're, we're working on right now is the Flat Rock, Kitten Lake, and Beaver Run area. And for the most part, that is our test case right now. And I want, want, want her to come this morning and share with you that, some of the results of that and what we're trying to achieve here. So Kate, if you'll come, I appreciate it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm here to explain a lot of the GDOT initiatives that we're currently proposing for, well, we're doing for all of the state of Georgia. This is both for on-system and off-system for most of the stuff that I'll explain. And we did do a pilot study on State Route 22, Beaver Run Road. So right now, we're in the process of upgrading traffic signal software throughout the whole state. This, again, is for on-system and off-system, so we would do your entire network. We've also got a central software that does automated traffic signal performance measures. We can do, we have a software inventory site, and we can assist with some maintenance and upgrades on system. There are some programs that do off-system as well. And we brought Sean Coleman. He is the lead for the contract for this region that includes GDOT's District Three and Four and part of Seven. And he is part of this new contract that we're doing with, just dedicating $10 million to the entire state for just traffic signal operations. So why are we moving to this new software? High-resolution data is the future of traffic signals. This is collecting the status of everything that is happening at the signal every tenth of a second, which lights are green, which lights are red, which PED buttons have been pushed, so which one, where you have pedestrians, which detection is active, so where you have vehicles. We can see this data very clearly by collecting this high-resolution data. But in order to collect it, we needed this new software, and it also requires an updated CPU, which is something that we are providing through this program. It's also a web-based software, which means that your techs do not have to have downloaded software onto their computer. When we send out an upgrade to the software, everyone gets it because it's just on the web. This can also send upgrades to the software directly to the signals. It's a lot easier to program. I'm sure you guys haven't actually dealt with signal software before, but it used to be very dry and very difficult to use. This is very user-friendly. It's a lot easier to train the technicians on how to use it. And one of the advantages of this new software is transitioning between plans is almost immediate. So in the past, if you were going from an AM plan to a midday plan, it may take several minutes. This could take seconds. So it goes a lot, a lot faster and keeps the corridor moving a lot better. So this is what our software looks like. The nice thing about the software is that it, you can dial directly into the controller. So this H, or IP address at the top, I actually, is one of your signals at State Route 22 at I-85 southbound. We've stuck a 4G modem in there when we did the retiming effort out there over the summer. And I was actually able to access the signal, and I can see from my computer in Atlanta which lights are green, which lights are red, where there's vehicle detection, where there's PED detections. So we can make remote monitoring decisions, and we can change the signal based off of the data that we're collecting to improve the corridor in real time. We also have a central software that comes with this package. It's a map-based, which makes it a lot easier to visualize what's going on out there. You can see the corridor as a whole, which lights are red, which lights are green, and which directions. It's easy connection to all that signal information. And this allows us to remotely monitor all the data, so you don't have to rely on a citizen complaint to know if something's wrong. It's data-driven timing adjustments. We're actually making a timing adjustment based off of where you need more green time or where vehicles are. We can send out automatic notifications of when something's operating unexpectedly. So if detection is out, you can get an email notification that says something is wrong here, and you can check it out online before sending your staff out. It saves a lot of time, especially statewide for us, but for you guys as well, from people driving to locations where there may or may not be an issue. And it does provide a lot of data for operational improvements. In the future, we can collect counts through this as well. So this is what our software looks like. So you can see it's a map-based. You just zoom into your area, and you can see exactly what's happening. And again, you can see all of the stuff that's on the local software, which lights are red, which lights are green, where there's vehicle detection. So what are automated traffic signal performance measures? That's how we visualize the data that's coming in, because it's a massive amount of data. So we have a website that you guys have access to. It's public-facing as well, so anyone can access it. This can tell us if the light is being, the green time is being used effectively, or if we can move that elsewhere to another movement. Are vehicles arriving when the signal is green or red? We can adjust the offsets between signals to make sure that vehicles are arriving when it's green, as opposed to having to stop and then go. And if you have specific priority movements, like a left turn off of a freeway, then we can make sure that they are getting enough green time compared to other movements. We can look at arrivals on red as well. Turning movement counts and approach volumes are probably the ones that you guys would be most interested in. So this is our public-facing website. Those are three of your signals that we currently have online, and we can collect data on. I did not pull the data specifically from those signals for this presentation, but you are welcome to go online and pull it. They haven't been on very long, so, online very long, so the data is limited at this point. But the longer they're on, the more data we have, and the more that we can do data-driven timing changes. So this is an example of what we can do. From my computer sitting in Atlanta, I can remote into a signal down here. So this chart is showing when vehicles are arriving. The green line is when the vehicle is green, and then the yellow is when it, or when the signal for that movement is green. The yellow is when it turns yellow, and then the red is when it turns red. So you can see all the, the black dots are vehicles approaching the signal. In the bad scenario, they're all approaching before it turns green, which means that they now have to slow down and stop. Then we made a change to the offset, and now all those vehicles are arriving when the signal is green. They're just flowing right through. This is another one that we can do with the data. This is a citizen complaint that came in where they were saying that the detection wasn't working on a side street, so it was always coming up when there was no vehicles there. And they sent a tech out during the middle of the day, or in the morning when they came on shift, couldn't find anything wrong with the video detection. We pulled up this data in the middle of the night. For whatever reason, there was a shadow or something that was happening with the video and was causing the side street to get a call, so it was coming up in the middle of the night. This is something that you wouldn't see by just sending a tech out there. So we're currently deployed at over 4,000 intersections across the state. We're doing state and local routes. We did start with the districts because of this GDOT program, but now we are moving on to the counties and cities. Currently, we've done Gwinnett, Athens, Clark, Cobb, Clayton, Macon, Augusta, Gainesville, Roswell, and Alpharetta. We're working right now with Valdosta, Noonan, Fitzgerald, and hopefully with y'all to convert to your system. We do the whole system at once. It's a turnkey deployment. We come in with our staff. They take all of your current existing timing, they convert it to this new platform. We put in the CPU that is required to collect this data. If any of the equipment in your signal cabinets does not work with the upgraded CPU because it is more powerful, some of the power supplies we've come across just aren't strong enough for it. We will also replace that equipment so that this runs as it's supposed to. And we provide the license to the central software, and we would have to negotiate, not money-wise, but how you guys want to set up if you want it onsite, or if you want to use our software, or our server. We also provide support after implementation, and we do training with the staff prior to deployment and throughout the deployment and after deployment. So we're not trying to push something new on you guys and not have your staff be able to handle it. So on top of that, what do we do with all of this data that we're now collecting with this new software? We've got three contracts. We divided the state into three regions. We've got $10 million that GDOT is dedicating every year towards just signal operations for this region. Kimbley Horn is our prime. I brought Sean Coleman, who's one of the Kimbley Horn engineers. They do a lot of the actual retiming work that we do, and they will monitor the data. We can be as involved or not involved with signal operations as the city would like. Some cities don't have any traffic engineering staff, and we can provide them a lot of support. Others have their own, and we're just kind of there to answer questions. So what can our contracts do? We've got traffic signal timing, which we've done on State Route 22, actually through a previous contract. So this is a more robust contract that we have now. We can fine-tune existing timing plans. We can do full retimings. We can put in holiday timing plans or evacuation timing plans, or if you have special events in your city, we can put in plans for things like that. We can also do traffic responsive, which is a step up to adaptive. So the signal doesn't actually change every cycle like adaptive does, but it can bring in an AM plan earlier if traffic warrants it, and extend it longer if, say, for whatever reason, everyone is going to work late. We can also do active management, which is a very intensive program of in an AM plan earlier if traffic warrants it, and extend it longer if, say, for whatever reason, everyone is going to work late. We can also do active management, which is a very intensive program of someone's looking at these traffic signals every day, or every week, or every month, and making adjustments based off of the data that they have. So, one of the advantages of having all the traffic signals online and going to this new software is the remote monitoring of the traffic signals. Our consultant staff will also respond to Maxu alarms, or send them to whoever is appropriate in your staff. They're fine-tuning using those performance measures. And they can identify locations for CCTV and travel time detectors. This is advantageous if we are more involved, because, obviously, most of our staff is in Atlanta, and if we can see what's going on while we're making changes, it makes it a better program overall. If we did identify CCTV locations, that is something that we can also fund. Okay, so, this was our pilot project on State Route 22. We did five signals. AECom did this through our statewide re-timing contract, which was the previous contract from what we have now. They did also convert the timing to the new software. Some of the staff in the area was able to get trained on the Intellight software, and so far, we haven't heard any issues with the conversion at all. We also installed the 4G modem so that we could remotely monitor it. These were some of the figures that came out of that re-timing effort. The average travel time dropped. This was for all three of the peaks, the AM, the midday, and the PM. Seventeen percent. The average number of stops dropped 44% from 2.3 to 1.3. So, you're stopping one less time during that corridor. And the total delay dropped 43%. We got a benefit-cost analysis of what GDOT put in versus what we calculate as savings between fuel and time for the driver as 22 to 1. This is one of our very successful programs, the re-timing effort. Not specifically just to yours, but re-timing in general does create a lot of benefits for us, and we have a very successful program with it. One of the other things that we can offer is traffic signal timing, or traffic signal inventory site. This is also a web-based. This is all of, I believe this is mostly y'all's area that I pulled up. It shows all of the inventory that's at a signal. It allows for one place for everything signal-related to be kept, and your staff can have access to this as well. We currently have over 8,000 Georgia signals. I used one of my contracts to go around the state and do every signal on state routes, so we could add any that are local into the system, if you guys would like to. It's got signs, traffic signal equipment, pictures of the cabinets and approaches, ADA compliance ratings. It's got an overall rating of the signal, so that we can use this data in the future to program projects of where we need to upgrade signals, how old the equipment is. It's just a one-stop shop for everything that's related to y'all's signals. And one of the other programs that GDOT has is maintenance and upgrades. Any location, if you have a NEMA cabinet still, we can upgrade those on-system or off-system. LED signal heads is also something that we will do on and off-system. For the state route systems, we can do routine and preventative maintenance and full rebuilds for ADA accommodations. And that's all on GDOT's dollar. None of the stuff I've talked about today is something that you guys would provide funding for. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Doesn't look like it at this time. Here we go. We've got Counselor Allen.
Thank you. I appreciate your presentation. Part of my district is the intersections you were talking about. The traffic counts that we've had out there, at least in my layman's mind, do not reflect the total number of vehicles that would use that area if it were improved, because a lot of folks are taking other routes to get home or wherever they're going.
Okay.
So, I was just wondering, once you make these enhancements, and people start talking about the better, you know, it's improved, I can get through there quicker, is that traffic now going to shift over and cause additional congestion?
It very well could. So, as routes become clearer and GPSes send people through there, because now they can get through there faster, you will have increase in traffic. That is generally something that we do and participate. With this new software and getting the new data, we can constantly tweak the timing to improve it. In the past, we would have gone out there, done a full re-timing, and just left it for one, or two, or three years, depending upon when funding allowed for another re-timing. We can constantly monitor the system with this new setup, so that we can make adjustments every day, or every week, or depending upon if you have an event going on this week might be a little bit different than last week, and we can have someone monitoring that and making adjustments.
Okay. Will the monitoring be at your level, or will the local, our office, our transportation folks?
It can do either. So, we have the resources to provide support for that monitoring. That would just be a discussion between us and y'all's engineering staff of how much involvement they want us to have.
Okay. Thank you.
We have Counselor Baker.
Yeah, this piggybacks what Counselor, because my district is on the other side of the intersection. Going back down Flat Rock and that bottleneck, there has been a problem for years, and we'll be looking for relief. So, I appreciate very much what you're trying to do. We hope to get those residents down, further down Flat Rock, some relief from that bottleneck as it backs up down there. And the other piece to this, I think, we don't have a timeline yet, Rick, but we've got a roundabout out there just past this.
That's correct.
With the intent of getting some of that truck traffic off going through that bottleneck, because they cut down Flat Rock to cross Macon to get into Industrial Park, because there's a light there, and the insurance companies and trucking companies require them to use that light. But, once the roundabout further out is complete, they won't have to do that. The idea, anyways, for them to go out to the end of Beaver Run, come back in, take Flat Rock off the truck route, and that should relieve some of the problems. And in conjunction with the new signal, I hope those people out there will get some relief. I said, "We've been working on it for six or seven years, and it's been a difficult time for them." Because it's really just, Flat Rock Road is really just a, you know, if you grew up here, it used to be just a sleepy country street, and there's nothing but residences on there, and you've got the 18-wigglers going down there to get over to the industrial park. So, I think the roundabout, the roundabout in conjunction with this, I hope will really get some relief out there. So, I thank you very much for your work. Thank you.
Counselor Baker, you're absolutely correct. There is a proposed roundabout going, we're discussing that with GDOT now, and they're in the design phase of that for us to happen. The other thing we need to keep in mind, and I know that Counselor Allen and I have some conversations about in the past, is we're not, we haven't seen all the development that's going to actually occur on that, in that corridor out there yet. In fact, we're in the midst of now going through the process of getting the area to go through a process of rezoning for a very large tract of land out there that has the potential for some really heavy induced traffic that could be generated from that site, and we've got to work through that. So, whatever we can, whatever we can find, and whatever we can do to try to help alleviate that, because like I said earlier, there's nothing that I know of that we can go out there without tearing up everything up and starting over that we can do right now to help alleviate some of that traffic. So, we've got to be somewhat proactive in terms of doing this. The one thing I want to, I want to make sure Kate tells you also, I don't know if you expressed this enough to them, the actual cost of doing this. I see a lot of you already grabbing your wallets, so let me tell you. Tell us what it costs for us to do this.
Nothing. Nothing. This is all on GDOT. Nothing for Yoda Pay.
We're not used to hearing that.
We weren't either. Like I said, we were getting ready to start spending some funds from the, our, the MPO, and what we were looking at just for that little section, those five intersections, a little over a million dollars. So, you can see the value we're going to get, I think, in terms of doing this. We wanted to bring it to you first, so let you know what we were trying to achieve here, what we're trying to do, before we actually put it into process, before we gave it back to them and said, "Yeah, we need to go forward." The other thing we wanted to see was what the actual results were from what they've done. I think you've had, there's probably, what, three weeks now, that software somewhere in that neighborhood? So, you can see the real value we're already seeing, I think, in doing this. The next step, I think, is trying to figure out what the timeline is to actually implement this citywide, if we so desire to do that.
All right. We have Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Jones, that was one of the things I wanted to ask you. This is a pilot project, and if it goes as we think it will, are there plans to expand it to other parts of the, similar equipment and software and so forth to other parts of the city?
Yes, ma'am. My understanding is we'll do this citywide, not just on the state routes, but we also have, also do it on our local routes as well.
We don't want the engineering staff to have two platforms that they have to deal with, so we convert the entire network of signals that's in the city.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't know if we're going to see the real value of this until it actually happens, but when there's something going on on one of our roadways, whether it be an accident or something that's slowing down traffic, this system will usually identify that and help us adjust those signals to accommodate that, at least through the time when that period is over with. So, we could, so they can actually sit now at their desk, like she said to you, and say they can make these adjustments there. We don't have to send a crew out there to do this, and all that good stuff that goes with it. This is going to be almost instantaneous, and it's going to be hands-on. And the other thing I want to make sure we all understand too is, I'm not trying to oversell this to you. I know we've all heard, you know, wonderful things about, you know, about signal systems, and they come here, how we're going to, how we're going to get the timings done, and everybody's going to get green lights no matter where they go. I'm not trying to oversell that, but I think we're getting to a process here now where the technology is there to help us adjust these signals and maintain our traffic flow through the community at a proper pace. That's what we're trying to achieve. So, this is what we're trying to.
One other, one other thing I wanted to ask you. I believe that you said you can do some of this programming for special event kinds of things. I'm thinking about the times that I have gone to a, an event at the River Center in Uptown. And when it was over, everybody and their brothers trying to get out of Uptown, the traffic lights are all still set for noon, you know, and so, will this help with those kinds of situations, this software?
So, we can set up plans for special events. So, Sean does a lot of the special events in Atlanta. He can speak to you.
Good morning. Sean Coleman with Kimley Horn. We're doing that right now for the new Mercedes-Benz Stadium, Phillips Arena in downtown Atlanta, and special events of multiple sizes across the state of Georgia and across the country. So, yeah, absolutely. It's usually the one or two issues. It's usually the, the timing is stuck in something, a typical weekend, that's a little more sleepy, not quite as intense as an event, or you have police take over complete control of the signal system, put everything in flash, which, which can work, but there's no semblance of coordination between signals, and it's not a system-wide approach. So, for instance, what we've done with the city of Atlanta, I have convinced the officers to not do traffic control, work with the signals, flush traffic out, and keep the pedestrians safe is their, is their main mission now. And so, yes, absolutely, with this software, because it's in constant communication and remote, not only is it for the planned events, it can be for the unplanned events. Something pops up, push down a new plan, get traffic moving. Absolutely.
And I know that sometimes, for example, the, the example I gave of River Center, the police officers are on Broadway, but they're not on First Avenue or Second Avenue. And those lights are also set for, you know, as you said.
Absolutely.
Some other time. So, as that happens, I've had people say to me that the traffic lights in Columbus need to be coordinated, need to be synced. They are. They turn red every time I pull up to one. So, you know, we have that. But, this, this sounds very exciting that, that we will have this kind of technology to do what needs to be done to move the traffic as it needs to move. Thank you for your initiative, Mr. Jones.
We have Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, before you left, we've had two events out in the Council District 6. Counselor Thomas and Counselor Henderson were there, and we talked through some of these transportation improvements, and the citizens are very excited. So, I just want to thank you publicly for all you're doing to help us in that area. So, thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you all very much. Very exciting. Appreciate your efforts.
Thank you for these quality-of-life improvements. Free, yes, absolutely. Next, I am going to call Director John Hudgerson for the solid waste ordinance. I know that Counselor Walker Garrett has been working with him, us, on this, and this is going to be a partial update, because we're not done yet. And so, John Hudgerson is here, and we've got Health Department officials here, and they're interested in this as well. And so, Mr. Hudgerson.
Good morning, Counsel. This is my 43rd day in charge over special enforcement, so I am starting to kind of get into the ordinances, and similar to how I did the building ordinance, I wanted to come at one time and kind of address all the issues. But, we will proceed and kind of show you what we've been up to. I'm kind of talking on the update now, to kind of go through and show you what we currently do in force, and the timeframes, and things that the ordinance has helped us do. And I know the mayor had a referral on commercial vehicles, so we'll also touch on that, and then with Counselor Garrett's information on the indoor-outdoor ordinance. So, we'll go through all of that. Like I said, September 18th, special enforcement was moved over to inspections and codes. Like I said, since that time, me and the city attorney's office have been on the phone pretty much every day, trying to work out definitions, figure out what we have, to kind of streamline what we have in the ordinance. Kind of to recap, like I said, on existing properties, if we had a concern, inspections and codes dealt with the structures, and we only dealt with the buildings and anything kind of in the grass, or pools, or things like that was under special enforcement, which was under public works. And now, it's all under inspections and codes. So, we're just trying to consolidate some of the work we did, and try to lessen the confusion on a lot of the ordinances. There were some modifications as Drell was helping with special enforcement and over that department, that division, and those things were brought in May of '17 and approved by council in August of 2017. And one of the biggest ones there is now we can go after the owner and the occupant. Previously, it was only the owner that showed, that was listed on the property. So, we couldn't really do much. If the occupant there was dumping trash and things like that, it would always go back to the owner, and the owner would be like, "Well, hey, you know, let's see if we can go after the person actually living in the facility." Now, that verbiage has been added into the ordinance. I've sent sections. I have the Health Department here. We've met, we've discussed items. Some of the stuff is still previous, before the dates of consolidation. So, there's a Columbus Department of Public Health that was actually run by the city, and then the Muskogee County Department of Health, and a lot of that verbiage is still in the ordinance. So, therefore, I met with them to determine, "Hey, this is Health Department. What do you currently do from this point forward, and what have we done in the past?" To work all that out. So, we're working with that and kind of getting a lot of that revised, so we understand that process and, and kind of the two realms we work in. And, like I said, I've talked to the former Division Manager, Drell, and also with special enforcement officers to kind of get ideas and suggestions to strengthen the ordinances. Those are quickly right there, all of the ordinances that we do do: solid waste, weeds, business license, Noah's ordinance, scrap tires, alcohol license, salvage yards and fencing, exercise taxes, and mobile home registration. So, the seven individuals plus the one supervisor that we have, that's, that's their daily, daily task. We want to go through kind of what we currently do in force. Like I said, for weeds, we can do an initial 10-day warning, and then there are no additional warnings for three years. Every time, what used to happen is that if somebody was a repeat offender, we'd have to come back every time and give them a warning. And if we knew that they were repeat offenders, now we can go straight to giving them a citation if it happens within that three-year window. The intent is to also add that to junk vehicles, so we have people that can constantly do the same type of things to be able to do that as well. Under solid waste, like I said, it's officer discretion, but more, more times than not, it's a five-to-10-day warning, then they're cited and taken to court. Salvage yards, commercial fences, junk yards, any things like that, we have to make sure they have those screens around them. That's a 15-day warning, and they're usually notified there. Structing city right-of-way, like I said, three, three-day warning slash discretionary, just depends on the severity of the issue. If it's a public safety, if it's blocking a stop sign, or some type of vision, issues like that, we can, we can speed that process up. Junk vehicles on private property, 15 days. I know we talked about it on Legislative Agenda, about some issues there, about being able to strengthen that, so we could possibly tow off private property on, on issues that we deem that are nuisances. City right-of-way is still currently seven days, and scrap tires are 10, 15-day warnings. Like I said, some of these things, some of these warnings can be shortened. I've kind of talked with the Health Department to kind of see if certain things, like mosquito harborage, and rats, and things like that, we can, we can kind of move a little more quicker, depending on the severity of what's going on. One thing I do want to speak out on the junk vehicles, this is currently what's in the ordinance right now. So, out of these items that are there, we only have to have two to issue a citation. So, I kind of want to spell those out, so you all can kind of see those, understand where we were. we were if we have somebody with an unknown ownership, so if the tag is off. If it's overgrown with vegetation, we go out there and look at the tires. If we see that the grass is higher than the tires, then we know obviously it's been there a while. Flat tires, critical parts, if the hood is missing, you know, trunk's gone, things like that, this is what's already in the ordinance. The one that I do want to kind of speak out to you guys is about the responsible adult resident or property owner. If we get those, and then with that in addition to one other issue, we can go ahead and start to cite. So I did want to point that out, that that's already there, it's just, we just have not, just used it as, as much as we should. But one of them specifically in there is the complaint. So if we get the complaint and we have one other issue with that car, we can deem it as a junk vehicle, not necessarily two of the other things that are already there. Compliance, these are for immediate citations. If we see any illegal dumping, any, any noise ordinances, things like that, we will immediately go after that. I know I've gotten a few concerns from some of the councilors on littering, and like I said, we'll go as far as we can on litter cases if we can find the originator of the litter. And that's always the biggest issue. Somebody just throws it out of their car is one issue, but we've had officers that if they see a trash bag and if they find a letter or a bill or a credit card, you know, something in there that we can, we have an address on, we'll go issue a citation at that person's house. So we will do that if that information is available. It's just a lot of times people are just, you know, you see a Burger King cup on the side of the road, it doesn't really have, you know, address or anything on it. But if we do find anything that gives us any information, we will proceed. I know the mayor, she had mentioned some issues with the commercial vehicles in residential areas. So this is the current ordinance that is already in place, and so this regulates small commercial vehicles, small commercial trailers, large commercial vehicles and large commercial trailers. So based off of those, you can have one commercial, one small commercial vehicle, and one small commercial trailer, and one large commercial vehicle. That's the way it's written currently. But it has to be on a driveway or a concrete parking pad. It can't just be on the side of the road, in your, in your front yard, just catty-cornered any kind of way. As long as it's on an approved surface, this is currently what is in the ordinance. Now, we don't allow large commercial trailers, so a lot of times you'll see the truck, cab in the neighborhood, but you won't see the trailer. And so that, we can regulate if the trailer, there are special exceptions for under commercial construction equipment if it's a dump truck. If it's a dump truck, as long as the contents are empty, there's nothing actually in the truck, then we'll allow it to, to stay in the neighborhood. And just kind of a picture there, so it's allowed if it's, you know, if it's on a driveway, it's at the person's house, it's not in the yard, it's not on the road, as you see in the other one, which would be prohibited. We would give them a notice there and a warning, and then come back and check. I know the city manager gave us a, I think there was one on Attlebury a little while ago on a junk vehicle, and we went out there and took care of that and issued them a citation as well. So like I said, once we see it, we go out there and do what we can. A lot of them, like I said, we'll get calls from citizens, and it'll be either that night or the next day, and if we get out there and say they're a delivery truck driver, you know, if we get out there the next day, that, that current issue is not there. So it's really, it makes it hard for us to be able to cite a commercial vehicle if they're not there.
John, now if, if you have a situation where there is a cab such as this on the street in your neighborhood, you call special enforcement, you call 311, you don't call the police department?
No, we can, we can enforce the blockage on the right-of-way, and we will have them move it off of the street. So as long as it's onto a driveway or an approved concrete pad, we can do that.
Okay. Mayor Pritton?
That also relates to regular automobiles, right?
I think regular automobiles can be parked on the street, John.
After, it can't, it can't be more than seven days, and then they're deemed as an abandoned vehicle, so...
Not mean as far as parking in the yard, you got five cars parked in somebody's yard that's not on a concrete pad.
Yeah, that's, that's one of those, that commercial vehicles, you can have unfortunately as many cars as you want. There's not a limit on how many cars you can have. Now, we can deem the car to be junk if something's wrong with it and it cannot be moved and it's no longer affable. We're working on something, also on an approved surface. It may not necessarily be a full concrete driveway, but some type of approved surface that we can make sure that the cars are placed on, and we're looking at that as well.
But I thought that it was illegal to park in the, I mean, we've been through this before. Can you just check with, with Lucy?
Okay.
Because we've been down that road, and I swear we confirm that you cannot park in your yard.
Well, and most of that, those came from the historic district.
Yeah, but it was my, yeah, I think there are some others too. Just double-check. I want to make sure whatever it is, we're consistent.
Okay.
Because I got several in my district, that five cars parked in the front yard.
Okay.
All right. With Councilor Garrett's, we've been looking at the proposed indoor/outdoor ordinance, and so this part of the ordinance is prohibiting outdoor placement of household appliances, household furniture, or household furnishings outside of your, outside of the four walls of your property. So even if it is on the porch, it would be considered, if it's not deemed used for, for outdoor use, we would be able to cite. Some of the preliminary research I've done, you can see some of those cities there, Boulder, Colorado, Raleigh, Urbana, and Ann Arbor, those are more towards college towns, so I'm kind of trying to see what, what their ordinances have, because they, you know, college kids just throw a couch on the porch, you know, things like that. So that's kind of where these are coming from, and so I'm trying to kind of mold and see kind of what they've done in, in other areas to kind of see how they've enforced them. A lot of them have been on the books since 2010, 2009, so they've been there a while, so it's just trying to get some follow-up on them to kind of see how that's going, how it's being enforced. Kind of in that picture there, you see that dining room table. As of right now, it wouldn't be deemed solid waste because it is still usable, but if we were to do this as an indoor/outdoor ordinance, that, that would have to be removed off the porch or put somewhere in storage.
We've got Councilor Thomas.
Ms. Hutchinson, I'm thinking about some of the yards that I see with, it looks like yard sale kind of stuff...
Mm-hmm.
...in the yards. Is that currently not allowed, or is that something that would be covered under, under this proposed? You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah. The, the way our solid, solid waste ordinance is written is that, is if it's still usable, it's not considered solid waste. So if you were to have a yard sale and have, if you're selling, you know, things like that, now we'll check in on the, the business license side to make sure they're not there, you know, all week selling stuff, and we can kind of keep them from doing that. But I'd have to get back with you for sure on that because I'm not 100%...
Well, I know that in some, some of the neighborhoods that I've seen, it does seem like it's always there, and the yard is full of, you know, what I would call junk, but you may not call it junk.
Yeah, if you can get us that address, we can, I can let you know what we have on it.
Okay, thank you.
John, too, I know a lot of this stuff you're still working through. You know, there is outdoor furniture that looks exactly like indoor furniture, so I don't know how in the world you're going to get up there and pick it up and turn it over and look, but...
I understand. And like I said, a lot of the ones that we saw in some of those older, those older ordinances, they mentioned upholster furniture, but you can buy outdoor upholstered furniture now that...
Is outdoor furniture.
So I, I had concerns kind of previously as to how to enforce it and how we look at it. And I don't want to put my officers in a bad situation when they've got to go out here and guess and assume. Now, if it's a ratty couch, it's bad enough. We'll just deem it solid waste when you got to take it out. But trying to kind of regulate what's on the porch, like I said, I just know it'd be, be a lot tougher for our discretion in how we'd be able to handle it.
Yeah.
Like I said, the way a lot of these other ordinances have been written now, if it's fully in a screen porch, you know, do whatever you want, you know, if people get a sunroom and things like that, and you got an attachment to your house, it's just kind of what it is. But we've been kind of wrestling as to how to, to help with the concerns that we're having from the citizens, but not be too overbearing on, on the city as a whole as to how to enforce it.
Okay.
And that's, that's pretty much it.
All right. Anything else for John? We've got Councilor Barnes.
I'm glad the Health Department's here. There is one issue that I've, it's ongoing in all areas of the city, and that's the pools. Because whenever we complain about the pools, and there are a number of instances still in my district right now where someone has a pool, in Sears Woods, the pool is as dark as this here, the water in it. So when we report it, the Health Department goes out, says there's no mosquitoes or whatever, and leaves. That doesn't stop the smelly, rank airborne bacterias. So now we need to have something that covers that. There's about three places, two in, one is, one in, both of them are in, one's in Farmington subdivision, the others in Sears Woods. So when I call out, Health Department goes out, says no mosquitoes. The, the water's still there. Right, what do we do? Help this a question for the Health Department.
If you would come forward as a representative.
There needs to be, there's that catch-all where the Health Department goes out and they abide by your ordinance, your regulation. But that, and this one particular woman is, this one particular, I won't mention where, there's another case where this woman is, is battling cancer. The pool is right outside her bedroom, where she can't even open a window. And I know we've been, the Health Department's been out there a number of times, and they say no mosquitoes. But that does not solve the problem of the rank, smelly, and airborne bacteria. So now, that's, we need to, we need to wrap up that somehow. We need to have something that covers that.
Okay. I'm Kristy Ludi, I'm the Environmental Health County Manager at Columbus Health Department. Can y'all hear me okay?
There we go.
My name is Kristy Ludi, and I'm the Environmental Health County Manager at the Health Department. And one of our programs is vector control, as you know. There's, there is a distinct difference between a health, excuse me, a public nuisance and a public health issue or health hazard.
Sure.
So when the environmental health staff goes out to investigate mosquito-borne areas for larvae, such as in a pool, we look to see if there's a health issue or hazard. If there's not, if we don't see any larvae in the pool, then that becomes a health, excuse me, a public nuisance. And we're not able at this time to regulate a, a public nuisance issue as far as the Health Department goes.
We're not talking about larvae, I'm talking about airborne bacteria. What do you do with that? That could be vectored as well. We're not talking about insects. What about that? That would, to me, would be a health hazard.
I can certainly look into that.
Sure.
I don't think that that has been brought to my attention on the health effects of, now, we do indoor air quality, but not outdoor air quality.
See, and that's what I'm saying...
So that's something that we can look into.
Yeah, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry. But to me, that, that just seems to be a huge problem, because we do indoor, why not outdoor? We're talking about a pool, and I'm talking about three areas that have been, there's been more, but the ones that concern me, the three that I'm bringing up, are individuals, two of them who are battling serious illnesses. And like this one lady, three-time cancer person, can't even open her window up. So I think that if you do indoor air quality, something like that, and I'm, and it's just something, I'm not pointing fingers, this is just something that we need to correct, that outdoor quality like that should be addressed as well. Because it is a serious, as you very well know, if you stand next to putrid water, trust me, you're going to come down with something. So this is something that I just need to bring to your attention, that we need to address, because it's, it's a real-life situation. Anytime you have a pool, it's the color of this here. I'm healthy, I can't even go there and stand outside because of the smell. We're talking about a woman who's, who's being treated for a serious illness and can't open her window. And so this is something which has come up. Everybody's doing what they're supposed to do, because when the Health Department goes out, they say it's no larvae. Well, I'm not talking about that. So this is something that, that I'm glad we're discussing. Thank you, John. Thank you, City Manager, because it is a problem. So if you could look into that and, and get back with me, I appreciate, and that would be a referral too, by the way.
Yeah, and I was about to say, we'll list it as a referral, and we'll get with you.
We will, I will utilize our epidemiologist on that.
I appreciate that.
Because those complaints would go through her, if there's somebody that's diagnosed with an illness that would be a public health issue like this.
Yes.
Would go through our epidemiologist, and then would need a follow-up from Environmental Health if, if need be, from the direction of the epidemiologist. So it's something that I will look into, yes.
That's good, and that's why it's good that we're having something like this and reviewing the special enforcement regs, it's really a good thing.
Sure.
Because it's, nothing's wrong with tweaking things, and this is something that definitely, and would you, when you do get with your epidemiologist, would you get back with me?
Yes.
Because I have personally looked up some things on this issue, so it's a, it's a concern for me.
Yes.
So if you'll, when we get with you, you provide a response to us, and we'll make sure Councilor Barnes and all of the city council members receive that.
Will do.
Okay.
Okay, and the other, just give me a second to, pardon?
Evelyn has a question about the pools.
Oh, oh, here's a question about the pool.
Mayor Pritton?
I guess to John, also in Councilor Barnes' area that he inherited from me in Regent's Park, there's a situation where there's a vacant house with a pool in the backyard, and the people out there have to be bothered with snakes and rats and all that stuff coming out every year.
Right.
It's the same, I think, every summer. I mean, what can we do about that?
What I'm currently trying to put together, two things, is on, we have a current solid waste and lot-clearing RFP, and we're going to be revamping that. Ideally, what we want to do is also when we come and cut the grass and get some of those weeds down, we're also going to put some type of weed prevention spray out. We're going to spray as well. So therefore, instead of we're cutting it, we've got five or six properties, we've probably cut six times this year. But if we go out there and, and put out some type of preventative measure to keep those weeds from coming back up, we'll be able to, to help with some of that. We do do mosquito dunks. Like I said, some of the insecticides that we do use, if somebody does call and give us a complaint on a pool, we will do that. We've had some issues with draining that water, because then now you're just moving that problem from one place to another. Now it just became out of the pool, and now it's still standing water on the property. And then the city, because we physically would have drained it, created the issue, then how do we deal with it? So I'm trying to work, kind of to figure out what's the best way to go about that, because it's not really a, a good answer. Because like, a property like that is more than likely foreclosed on, trying to get a hold of the owner to get them in to correct, and they're long gone. So we're, like I said, we're just kind of, I'm just starting to ask all the questions and get the right people in the room to figure out what's the best way to, to streamline what we're doing.
Because if we, if we've been doing this for three to five years, every year the same situation, it doesn't make sense to have to keep going through that.
I understand.
When you can't sit on your back porch or your side porch because of something that's coming from somebody else's yard.
That's right.
And nobody's living there. And, you know, to think that a child, your grandchild is outside trying to play, and you got snakes and all this other stuff coming up out of somebody else's yard.
Well, we're looking into it. We'll get, we'll get on it.
Posse, do you have something else?
Yes, I sure do. Let me just, I'm battling with this technology here. By the way, I'm, I'm glad that we've combined, special enforcement. I mean, that was a brilliant move.
He's been there 45 days, and you can see...
I'm talking, I like this young man, right? Plus he got that beard, I like that on a young man. John, this is the other thing that I'm concerned about. The other thing I'm concerned about is the, when we have an absentee landlord, and we send out, well, let me just give you, for instance, and this is a constant thing with, with me. I reported on, on the 21st of August about high weeds. And I always go out and I make sure I check with my eyes, because I know you, you all are busy. And I'm going to read right from here, the report. Someone went out on us that very next day, I like that, and they said that they sent a letter out. The letter was sent on the 22nd of August. On the 4th of October, because I, I walk my district, I always check, every time I call something in, I get a work order, I go check. So there's nothing done, but I know you all are busy, and we've had a lot of rain, I've told the citizens this, we've had a lot of rain, just give them time. So on the 4th of, of October, they went out again, because I called, and they said, resend another letter. So that went out on the 4th of October. I always wait two to three, because I know you're busy. On the eighteenth, I called Sabrina, says Councilor Barnes requested an update. On the eighteenth of October, this is, this is what was annotated on the work order. We have to give time for the letter to either be delivered or returned undeliverable before we can proceed with contracting. Now, this is the eighteenth of October. Meanwhile, the weeds are there. What I found out is that once we send a letter out, we lose control. Because I did call and I found out that you normally wait until the letter comes back. And I found sometimes it could be a month and a half, sometimes, and you, the city's good in tracking. But sometimes the letter could be languishing at the post office. And I found that out from one of the officers. I think a, a, a easy check for that would, would be for us to come up with an arbitrary time, a standard time that, that we can say, okay, listen, if we have not received the letter, that we need to start the contracting. It's an easy fix. Because this is, and it's, guess what? I went there, before I came here, I stopped by there. Yes, we're still waiting. And this is a, a person, and, and the place looks horrible. So I think if we haven't, if we come up with, and I know you now, see, I know you, where you work, you assess it, you're like Sherlock Holmes, you assess a situation, you come up with the answer. So I know you will, you can see clearly that an arbitrary quick fix would be to say, okay, this is the standard time for a letter to be returned. And whether we get the letter or not, that this is the standard time that we need to proceed with contracting. Because it's horrendous for this lady, who's a widow, to be there. And she has all that around, she keeps hers cut. But the side of her area is like a jungle.
Yes, we, we understand that. Typically, we do send them to a certified, certified letter. So therefore, we know that that owner received it. Now, take, because we had to resend that letter, that was not the correct owner. That was listed on the, the tax maps. So you see what I'm saying? So we're, we have to make sure we give them the same due process to notify them of what's going on. So if there was an incorrect owner that was listed, that's why I said you got the first letter that went out to the wrong address. And then once we corrected it and went it out.
How do you know when I'm giving it to you went to the wrong address?
More than likely, that's the only, we wouldn't send two letters because the, the way it's set up, we send that initial warning and then we proceed with getting it contracted.
I'm not, I'm not gonna put you on the spot because I like you, but I wanted to see this here. It was set, and I wanted, because I do. Not that, it's not enough, I like you, I like you because you're efficient. Let me put that out there. Because you are efficient and I've seen you make changes where you look at the situation and you, and you, and you correct it. But this, even with that, let's go with the scenario that you're talking about. It still does not preclude us from coming up with an arbitrary time, period, for us to say, okay, we have not heard back from them, we need to proceed with contracting. Because from August, and we're now November, that is not fair to the citizen.
I understand.
So a quick fix, and I'd like this, this to also be a referral, that we come up with a arbitrary time, be it whatever you're comfortable with, that whether we receive an answer to the letter or not, we will proceed with contracting. Because as of now, you see on the eighteenth of October, this is going out for contracting, I mean, going out, sending another letter.
And, and a lot of that comes from that RFP. If we define that RFP and we separate it between solid waste removal and glass, grass clearing.
I understand.
On the lot, therefore, we have more vendors to pull from and we can just send it out.
I understand.
Right now, we kind of compile sixty, seventy lots and then we send it to them and then that's what causes that delay, so.
See how Mr. City Manager, see how he cut through that?
Yes.
You did a good job with that, you really with the job. But anyway, if you can, that's a referral we can come up with.
Yes, sir.
For this year.
And I tell you, Councilor Barnes, when you were saying all that, I was thinking about Red McDaniel and a person he used to call genius. So I was thinking, genius.
Hey, hey, hey.
That's Red McDaniel.
He's taking his place?
He's taking his place, you're right, you're right.
Councilor Barnes, will you finish?
That's it, thank you.
Councilor Garrett.
I really appreciate you working all this and bearing with me during all this time. I did want to know if you think we'll have the indoor/outdoor furniture ordinance of some sort ready for the next business meeting? Just because, as you know, the hoarder in our, the neighborhood we've been working on is back at it and my constituents call me weekly about it. So I'd really like to get some sort of relief, even if we have to do something more comprehensive in the future, just so you'll have some power to do something about it.
Like I said, we can, we can bring it to discussion. Like I said, it's, the way it is, it is currently written, I, you know, it's just, you know, bringing it to council. Our, like I said, our concern is just our officer discretion. I know we take care of that one specific issue, but, you know, I, it's just gonna be hard for us to determine. That situation is a little different. So I think some of the things we can do will help this, but we'll have other neighbors like the picture I showed before. And it's like indoor/outdoor furniture. My thing is trying to find a good definition. And ideally, remember I talked to you about, solid waste is not necessarily something that's being used, but define solid waste as something not being used for its intended purpose. So if there's an engine in your front yard, that engine may be sparkling new, but you're not using it for its intended purpose. So therefore, we could cite you for that as a solid waste issue as opposed to just saying, okay, well, that's a junk sofa and we have to do something with it. So that's why I was trying to see if we could maybe tweak the definition.
If we could do that for the next business meeting.
And I think instead of just calling it an indoor/outdoor ordinance and we just redefine the definition of solid waste, I think we could, we could be able to address your issue and that would just be a definition change in the ordinance as opposed to a whole thing.
So well, if y'all can work together.
Yeah, we're, we're trying, like I said, I'm just trying to make sure I'm not contradicting something else that's in another ordinance or another section because everything with special enforcement is in four or five different chapters. So I'm just trying to kind of do my due diligence. I, I don't mind putting it right in, but I just, we're just trying to see if we can find some better definitions and then that, that gives us the teeth we need to, to enforce it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Barnes.
Yeah, John, let me give you this, that work order number is, it's Alpha Quebec Foxtrot Hotel Tango seven. If you can look into that for me, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And let me tell you, you, you get nothing but pundits from me. I'll tell you, you really impressed me.
Thank you.
Really impressed me.
Oh, like I said, whatever you need to get your job done. I think you'll get it. Are there any more questions? I see no more lines.
Okay, thank you.
This is Tanabe. A question in order for, that, that I'd like to see if I could get an answer to so I can proceed with our epidemiologist. You mentioned airborne diseases. If I could find out what airborne diseases that, that these individual or individuals.
Your epidemiologist, I'm sure knows, that's why I know, I know it's been a disconnect because every time they go out, they talk about the larvae and the mosquitoes.
Vector control, yes.
Yeah, so I know that, and I've mentioned this before, if you look at some of the council, there's, you need to do something about airborne contamination, just like you have it indoor, you have it outside. So if you get with your epidemiologist and they do their research, please have them contact me, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next, we're going to have short-term rental update and most of us know it as Airbnb. Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge is going to cover that. And then we'll follow that one with the digest TAD update and then the finance update. And if we're able to do the others, we will then do the CCG web and open enrollment update. So short-term rental, digest update, digest TAD, and then the finance, the monthly finance report update.
Good morning, counsel. This is truly an update. We have been working for months, inspection and codes, finance, business license, the city attorney's office, planning and zoning, the fire department and CCBB, trying to come up with a recommendation on how to handle, regulate, and enforce short-term rentals. And unfortunately, at this point, we do not have a recommendation. So this is just sharing information with counsel and getting any feedback on, on any of the points that we bring out today. Some of the challenges that we faced as we've been discussing this topic is whether or not to consider short-term rentals equivalent to hotels and, or set them up as a unique definition, which would be different requirements and different zonings. The online companies will not release the locations of any of the short-term rentals. So it's hard to regulate or enforce when we don't know the location of where these short-term rentals are. Talking about enforcement, how do we enforce them? And making sure that there is no liability on the city as we're looking into enforcing and regulating short-term rentals. And it's really created a commercial competition inside residential neighborhoods. And of course, we don't allow commercial activities in residential neighborhoods. So they're unregulated and unlicensed at this point. So when we look at our hotel motel occupancy excise tax and we look at the definition that we consider to be a hotel, it's any structure or portion of a structure. And of course, it lists lodging house, rooming house, hotel motel, public club, private club, containing guest rooms and which is occupied or is intended or designed for occupancy by guests, whether rent is paid in money, goods, labor, or otherwise. A guest room, a room occupied or intended, arranged, or designed for occupancy by one or more occupants for the purpose of living quarters or residential use. So in our mind, when we looked at this, short-term rentals fits that definition, which means that they would meet the same requirements as a hotel, which requires a health marshal slip from the health department, requires a business license. They would have to get a certificate of occupancy, which means they would have to have sprinklers, egress, fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, ADA. And so when you're talking in a residential neighborhood, someone's renting out one room of their home, going through all these steps would be very difficult for a homeowner. They would also be required as well to remit occupation tax, sales tax, hotel motel tax, and the destination fee. So then you're talking to a homeowner who's renting out a room, going through the same requirements as what a hotel goes through. So that's really what we've been struggling with, is how to regulate and enforce in these particular situations. And then the zoning classifications for a hotel is only in certain areas, which is UPT, which is uptown, the CRD, Central Riverfront District, RO, residential office, commercial, and then with a special exception in the historic district. Which means that these types of establishments are not allowed in residential areas. So we would have to amend the UDO in order to allow short-term rentals in residential areas. And we are getting complaints from citizens who have this activity in their neighborhood and do not want this type of activity in their neighborhood. So currently, we're reviewing the ordinances and policies from other municipalities. We are drafting an ordinance to distinguish and accommodate short-term rentals. We have had one discussion with the largest online company, which is Airbnb. They will not release the locations of the, of their customers, but they will remit the hotel motel tax on their behalf. But we still would not have any regulation in those particular residences. There's also House Bill 579 that's a state proposal that would preempt any local legislation. Basically, 579 takes any regulation away from local municipalities on any short-term rentals. So we've been monitoring that. There was a hearing on October twenty-third and I haven't heard the results of that hearing. But talking with Peter Bowden, he's part of our committee. And, and they're against, obviously, from the hotel's perspective, in not having short-term rentals regulated, this House bill would not regulate and would not allow us to regulate short-term rentals at all. So we're really kind of still reviewing. We do not have a recommendation at this point because we haven't come to a consensus on what our recommendation would be to counsel on how to enforce and regulate short-term rentals in residential areas is what we're really struggling with. I'm happy to answer any questions or take any feedback from counsel on this particular issue. But it is growing. We do have about a hundred short-term rentals that are advertised on Airbnb and other types of online companies. We actually do have a treehouse in Columbus that they're advertising for rental. We believe it's in the Lake Bottom area. They say they're close to Lake Bottom Park. So people are actually renting out their yards, treehouses, rooms. So it's, it's making it very difficult to determine locations as well.
And I'll just tell you, I was at a conference, a city managers' conference last week and there was a session on short-term rentals. And they advise that there are thirty-five thousand new listings across the country every single month. Thirty-five thousand new listings. And so it's a growing, growing concern. And, and we need to be able to, to regulate it locally and, and that's why home rule is so important to us and that's why we try to communicate that to our legislative delegation.
We've got Counselor Henderson.
Pam, how do they compare with the regular, like bed and breakfast? Do they have to comply with the ADA and the sprinklers and all of those things too?
They go through the same certificate of occupancy process.
So they, they fall under the hotel classification? All right. You know, I, I think when we first asked about this, there were some people that were upset, thinking we were against the Airbnbs. I don't think we are. I, I think that what's happened though is there's a lot of folks that have found a loophole and, and they've been able to create a little bit of an unfair advantage. You know, there are some people that just have a home they couldn't sell or couldn't rent and they, they started this, this short-term rental. And it provides a good service here close to Fort Benning because it allows some of these young folks that are going through the, going through their training, if their parents are relative as close enough, they'll rent one of these things for, for a couple of months and, and they get a home-cooked meal when they get, when they get off, off post for a little bit. But, but there are also folks that have quickly either built or bought dozens and are operating a business. And they've, they've, it's, there's just a loophole. I've talked to several people that own some of these things and they're not at all against the regulatory efforts by a municipality. It's, to me, it's a safety issue. There's a reason we don't allow commercial enterprises in, in, in residential communities. And it's, and because this is on the line between residential use and a commercial enterprise, I think you err on the side of caution. You just, you just want to know it's there and you want to make sure that you're not unintentionally creating an unfair advantage for a cottage industry, pardon the pun, that, that is, is taking business that would, might otherwise go into the B, the BnBs or the, or the hotels. So I just think this is something that we need to pursue and I think we need to fight very hard against any kind of state regulatory or limit on our regulation. That's just, to me, that is such an incredible overreach by the state's legislature. And in talking with our delegation, I almost speak for them, but, but I don't think they felt like that might be the best course of action either, so. Well, thank you for the update. I just, I just want to make sure that we don't let this, because the rate that, that the city manager just said these things are proliferating, we can't afford to let this kind of slow play. We need to kind of stay on top of it and, 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 you know, maybe even at some point get some draft legislation out there and let's convene with some of these folks that own them and let's see if they can live with it and let's get something in place. We can modify it if we have to later. But I think it's something that we're, we're gonna be in, we're gonna be very, very sorry if we let it get too far out in front of us.
Well, we can regulate them currently under the hotel motel tax with the current definition. But the issue for regulating them is they wouldn't be allowed in residential areas. So we'd have to amend the UDO in order to allow short-term rentals. So those are some of the things that we're looking at as part of our recommendation is to, if we're going to allow them, then we need to update the UDO.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, we have Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Hodge, you said the state proposal that would restrict any local legislation. Are there state regulations that are there? Or is this just saying there will be no regulations?
The way House Bill 579 is that the state would regulate and the locals would not be allowed to have any additional regulations. The way it's currently written, it talks about collection of sales tax, but doesn't talk about collection of our local hotel motel tax. So there's things in there that would not be beneficial to the local government.
Does the state, for example, require ADA confirmation or sprinklers or some of those kinds of items that you listed?
No, ma'am.
No, okay. The other thing that I wanted to ask you about, have we, have we made any? The other thing that I wanted to ask you about, have we made any decisions about what is a short-term, when we're talking about this? I'm thinking, I overheard a conversation just yesterday of someone who has a house, who wants to rent one of the rooms in her house to a kid who's coming to CSU next semester, and would only be there during the semester. So this would not apply to that kind of situation, is that right?
That's correct. This would be 30 days or less.
Okay. So each occupant, 30 days or less?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we've got Clifton.
Thanks. Let me read you the definition that they have in this proposed House Bill 579. Vacation rental or short-term rental means any individually or collectively owned, single-family house or dwelling unit, or any unit or group of units in a condominium, cooperative or timeshare, or owner-occupied residential home that is offered for a fee and for less than 30 consecutive days. Vacation rental or short-term rental shall not include a unit that is used for any non-residential use, including retail, restaurant, banquet space, event center, or other, or another similar use. So that's what the state is looking at as a definition on this thing going forward. Whether this particular bill passes or not, I noted that Representative Pizzol is one of the sponsors of this bill.
Looks like we don't have anything else, so. Wait, oh, we've got Counselor Baker.
Unless they're headed down the road, you know, we had the same problem with ride-sharing. You had your traditional taxi cabs and limousine services that were under sales tax and background checks and all those things, and when Uber and Lyft came along, nobody knew what to do with them, and they just-
That's right.
-did their own thing, and now the state has come in and completely taken control of all of that. And of course, they've done away with the sales tax, which may hurt us, but all of them now have one registration fee, background checks are the same, insurance requirements are the same. So I don't know if this is the path that they ultimately will go down for, you know, for BnBs or not, but-
Right.
-it sounds like it's sort of headed in that direction.
It could be. We did let the legislative delegation know yesterday, the ones that came, you know, that we need to keep local control of these sorts of issues because of the proliferation.
Okay. Looks like that's it for comments.
All right. Next, we're going to have our Finance Director, Angelica Alexander, talk about the digest and provide a tax allocation district update related to the digest. Angelica Alexander.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
So I know council has been asking for some time now the impact of the revaluation project and what that impact has been on the digest. So I'll briefly discuss that with you all today. So the 2016, or FY17, digest was just over $4.7 billion. Our 2017, or FY18, digest is just over $5 billion. The increase in the digest between the two years was 5.71%. Our budgeted increase was only 2.4%. So in FY18, we have a growth in the digest of 5.71%, as you see here in the chart. The increase comes from the assessments resulting from our countywide revaluation project. As you can see in the chart, there hasn't been any significant growth in the digest since it peaked in 2008. That was right before the recession hit. Since then, the recovery's been very modest, and the city typically expected to see 3% to 5% increases before the recession. So still not at the max that we've seen before, but a 5.71% is certainly better than what we've seen in the prior preceding years. So at a 96% collection rate, which is what we typically budget, we don't budget the full 100%, because we have to account for some delinquents. But in FY18, we budgeted a 2.4% increase. FY18 approved digest had a 5.71% increase. So at a 96% collection rate, the impact to the general fund would be an additional $964,268. To the stormwater fund, the additional impact would be $173,958. For paving, $482,429. For the medical center fund, $507,261. Metro's impact would be an additional $138,651. For the economic development fund, that additional impact is $84,543. And for the debt service fund, that's an additional $3,587 for a total increase of two, just over $2.4 million. And that's the increase in what we budgeted at 2.4%. So we plan for a 2.4% increase. But with the 5.71% increase, those numbers there is the difference between what we budgeted and what we actually have with the approved digest. Just as a reminder, council increased the bonus that was in the budget from 20 hours to 40 hours, and that impact to the general fund was about $800,000. So this difference here that we expect to receive most certainly covers that increase. So for TAD number one-
Angelica, can I make a comment as that last part? Then can we quit saying that we had to dip into reserves, then? Because I had that PowerPoint the other day, I sent it to you to make sure about accuracy. And you made me take out the part that said that the FY18 budget did not dip into reserves. You said it did dip into reserves. Well, now, if you're readjusting the collection rate, that seems like it didn't dip into-
Well, yes, that's technically true.
Okay.
The letter, I don't know if you're referring to the mayor's adopted budget letter?
My think it was that, and then also there was a PowerPoint. How about we get it offline? I just want to make sure we all say it correctly.
Right.
And I think also, I said something about budgeting this year without using reserve funds.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so anyway, if I just need to say it differently, fine, but I want to make sure we're accurate. And if we did do that, fine, but if our revenues have increased, then it seems like we can represent that to the citizens.
Right.
So if you'll get with me, I'd like to clear that up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, we've got Counselor Henderson.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear on it. We mentioned that 800,000 for the 40-hour bonus, 20 hours was already in there, right?
That's correct.
So really, the only impact to that was the 400,000 that we added additional. So that means that 964 covered that, didn't it? Because there was only a certain amount coming out of general fund, the rest was coming out of other funds?
That's correct. Well, the amount that was initially in the budget was about 800,000.
Okay.
So the increase to, of the additional 20 hours added an additional 800,000.
Okay. And that all came out of general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
There was some, I think it was a total of like $1 million, and some of it was out of stormwater funds and all that.
Yes.
So the net out of the general fund was 800, which pushed us into reserves, which made my PowerPoint wrong. That's how I got to the question a moment ago. So if you'll get with me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
So for TAD number one, which is the Benning Technology Park, the base digest here is $2.3 million. The 2017, or FY18, digest is about $2.5 million. So the net increase in that TAD district is $2,833. The impact to all the funds for the city's portion would be, of the digest, would be $3,345. The impact to the general fund is only $1,593 for this increase in the TAD district. For TAD District number two, which is Sixth Avenue and the Liberty District, the base digest was $27,000, well, $27 million, I'm sorry, $900,000. The 2017 FY18 digest is $27.4 million. This actually resulted in a net decrease in that TAD district of $451,833. So there's no impact to all funds or the general fund because of the decrease. TAD District number-
Counselor Allen.
How did we want it with a decrease?
Because it was valued less?
That's correct.
Than it was valued? The countywide reassessment valued it and valued it down?
So the values went down, but the city did not lose?
No, we won't, because as you remember, as far as the TAD districts are concerned, it's the increment, it's the increase that goes into the TAD fund, so to speak. And so because there is no incremental increase, there's no impact to us as far as the TAD district is concerned. Now, as far as citywide collections, obviously, it's going to be, we'll collect less because the evaluations have gone down, but it doesn't impact the money that we are supposed to set aside specifically for the TAD districts.
How much does it, do we have a cost associated with implementing a TAD?
Well, the, of course, let me think, in answering that question, the organization bringing forth the TAD bear the expense of Ken Blakely, for example, whoever they hire, we don't get into that, that's not our expense. The expense that we would incur would be additional work required for the staff who we already pay.
Man-hours.
Pardon?
Man-hours.
Man-hours, yes. And of course, the advertising in the newspaper or whatever would be an expense. But other than that, there's no real expense.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, let's see, we've got Counselor Henderson.
And just a reminder, we did talk, when we were talking about the TADS, and we were approving the geographic areas, we made the comment that because we had not yet gotten the citywide, or the countywide reassessment completed, that we reserved the right to tweak that footprint just enough so that it would trigger a resetting of the valuation. So in other words, what we're looking at, and if we did that, then these numbers would kind of be moved, because they'd be reset to the most recent reassessment. Is that not correct? Because our concern, my concern, was when we were doing this, it gets convoluted back-
I need you to say that again.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, because we were saying, one of the things that happened when the TAD was approved, when they, my understanding, when we approved the geographic footprint-
Yeah.
-of each TAD, that set the benchmark, that set the baseline-
Right.
-for our taxes. Well, we have since gone through a citywide, countywide reassessment to more accurately determine what the value of those properties are as of now. And I know we discussed that we were reserving the right, simply because we wanted to be completely, or as correct as we could and honest with the taxpayers about the current value of that property. We asked Mr. Blakely how we could reset that number, and he said amending the footprint, even by one parcel, would trigger a resetting of a new benchmark. Now, we had indicated when we discussed these that that's what we wanted to do, to get an accurate baseline. And so I'm just saying that if we did that, then the impact to those funds wouldn't exist because we would be redrawing the baseline. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And I know, and I don't know if council wants to do that, I know we reserved the right to evaluate that.
Exactly, but when we look at the growth, as she has pointed out, we projected 2.4, we got 5.7. There's, obviously, there were pluses and minuses.
Sure.
And a perfect example of that is what we just talked about in Liberty, I guess Sixth Avenue. You know, there were more minuses than pluses, and so there's no impact, and we actually-
Right.
Yeah, and so the question would be, you know, whether the juice is worth the squeeze in doing it.
Right. And I think that from my perspective, because I know Mr. Bishop and I had this discussion, was that the total amount of the money, when you break it down into the dollar value of what that increase or decrease in that assessment is going to yield, is fairly negligible. But we had told the citizens we were going to try to make sure that we had an accurate baseline after the citywide, or the countywide reassessment. So I just mentioned it because it's, to me, it's still out there. We had mentioned it when we were considering this, and I think it's something that we should probably go ahead and ask our planning department to identify a parcel in some of these areas, so that should we decide to move forward with that, we'd be ready in knowing how we're going to amend it, so it wouldn't significantly impact that area.
We can certainly have-
Didn't mean to bring all that up, but I just, we had talked about it.
By December, very, very, very-
By this year, that's right, because that would re-trigger it, and it would be eligible for TAD projects in 2018.
Yeah. Well, we can certainly take a look, and then you can make a decision at that time.
And I don't think you even have to take a parcel out or in. I thought you could just reset it.
No, I, when I asked, yeah, ask Ken Blakely, because when I asked him, he said, I thought I understood, and I'm wrong a lot.
He did. He said you would have to amend the map itself.
Right.
Not a whole lot.
No.
If you put in one parcel or five, you can.
Right. But there had to be some difference in the-
Right. It's got to be different from the previous map.
Okay.
Well, we'll take a look and do work from the December 31st back with a timeline to determine where we need to pull the trigger, when, if you're going to do it. And that way, we'll make sure that we don't-
Listen, I'm going to point, if I remember it, somebody else does. Just want to make sure that we-
We'll have staff take a look.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And we've got Mayor Proten. Hold on. Can you turn on the Mayor Proten's microphone, please?
Counselor Henderson, you're right. I remember, too, I was just asking the mayor about it.
Okay.
All right.
TAD District number three, which is for Uptown, the base digest was $51.7 billion, I'm sorry, $51.7 million. The 2017 FY18 digest is $51.8 million, so the net increase was $113,895. The impact to all the funds, all that receive tax revenue, is $1,878. To the general fund, that impact is $894. For TAD District number four, which is Second Avenue and City Village, the base digest was set at $25.9 million. The 2017, or FY18, digest is $27.4 million, for a net increase of $1,425,225. The impact to all funds is $23,506. For the general fund, that impact is $11,192. Midtown West, the base digest was set at $47.2 million. The 2017 FY18 digest is $49.6 million, for a net increase of $2,401. The impact to all the funds is $39,583. The impact to the general fund is $18,847. So the last TAD district is District number six, which is Midtown East. The base digest was $19.8 million. The 2017 FY18 digest is $19.6 million, for a net decrease of $145,990. So there's no impact as far as the increment to the TADs. So the total TAD impact across all funds is $68,312. For the general fund is $32,526. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions if you have them.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Angelica in addition to those already asked? Okay, we've got the Mayor Proten.
Angelica, when you look at, when you have the million-dollar increases, what's the impact- why is the impact only about fifty or sixty thousand dollars? Take Midtown West.
Midtown West. Right. So that is the total assessed value. That's the difference there. Um, so we have to equate that down to what we would actually stand to receive in collections based on the millage. So, um, I mean, the calculations for that is to take the net increase divided by a thousand, which gives us the tax rate, and then multiply the tax rate by our millage. So our millage for, um, across all funds is seventeen point one eight mils. Um, for the general fund is eight point eighteen. So that's how we determine what the impact is.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I know the public hears this million dollars, and then we're only talking about fifty or sixty thousand. They're gonna wonder what happened to the rest of the money.
Right.
Two point four million, it would be times forty percent.
Right.
Then divided by a thousand, then times forty-two, I guess. Right?
Forty percent of-
That is the forty percent value.
The two point four is forty percent?
We received the digest from the tax commissioner. It's already, it's the, the digest that we receive is the forty percent digest.
So that comes out of forty thousand dollars then. Okay, that's fine.
No, is that- So that's, that's just the city's portion. That's not including the school district.
Okay. I was running full forty-two mils.
Right. No.
Okay. I got you now. Thank you. Thank you. My mistake.
Okay. Um, Mayor Protem, did you have some more?
No.
Okay. All right. I think that's it. Angelica, thank you.
Proceed with the finance update.
Oh, okay.
All right. So you should have the monthly snapshot before you. This is as of the end of September two thousand seventeen. Just starting with the, to the right of the snapshot here, um, for the operating funds, the general fund is down fifteen point zero three percent. Um, I will make mention that we have received about five point eight million in tax collections thus far this, this fiscal year. Um, we have not distributed that out to the funds because we've just gotten a meeting with the Tax Commissioner's Office to go over the new reporting. You know, with the new system, there comes new reports. Have to make sure that we understand those reports before we distribute this money. Um, that meeting is set for next Tuesday. So hopefully, when I give the finance update next month, we'll have that revenue included. I will say, out of the five point eight million that we receive, typically about forty percent is allocated to the general fund. Um, that's about two point three million. Um, if those monies were in these numbers, the general fund would be relatively the same as it was last year or with an increase of about point six zero percent. Continuing on with the other local option sales tax fund, um, there, the increase is four point two three percent. For the stormwater fund, um, the decrease is eighty-one point six five percent. Um, the paving fund, the decrease is ninety-one point three two percent. Um, we don't have any revenue recorded for the medical center fund, so that, that decrease is one hundred percent. Again, these are tax-supported funds, so we haven't distributed the tax money to those funds just yet. So that's why those decreases are so dramatic. The integrated waste fund is up three point four zero percent. The emergency telephone fund is up two point four nine percent. The economic development authority fund is showing, it's down a hundred percent. We haven't allocated any money to that fund as well. Debt service is down twenty-four point two one percent. It also receives tax revenue. Um, the transportation metro fund is down fifty-two point nine nine percent. It is also supported with some tax revenues. The parking management fund is down thirty-six point five eight percent. Um, and while the revenues is, the revenues are down as compared to September of two thousand sixteen, um, the expenditures are down about sixteen percent as well. Um, so I know they, they're still working out those staffing issues. I did have a conversation with the metric director yesterday. And so they are fully staffed at this point and are making some headway to lessen some of this, the, the impact between seventeen and sixteen. The trade center fund is down three point one eight percent. Bull Creek Golf Course Fund is down four point seven four percent. Uh, Oxbo Creek Golf Course Fund is down four point three one percent. And the civic center fund is down two point seven nine percent. Moving down the snapshot to the other local option sales tax fund for the public safety summary, we've collected to date just over four million dollars in revenue that's been allocated towards the public safety, um, portion of the, of the local option sales tax fund. Obligated expenditures amount to six point two million dollars. That's as of the end of September. The other local option sales tax fund infrastructure revenues, we've collected about one point seven million. Obligated expenditures as of the end of September amounts to about one point eight million dollars. Moving to the left side of the snapshot here are the, um, total general fund revenues as of the end of September. What we've recorded was, is just over twelve point six million dollars, which is about eight point five four percent of budget. The general fund expenditures by department are listed below the revenue summary. Um, the departments that are currently exceeding the twenty-five percent goal are highlighted here. Not really that concerned with the departments that are, that are listed here because at the beginning of the fiscal year, as you know, we ask that departments go ahead and encumber monies that have already been obligated to some of the, for some of the commitment. Um, like, or there are expenditures that are due at the very beginning of the fiscal year. And as we move on through the fiscal year, um, these numbers will sort of balance out. So for council, it's the annual GMA dues that we do at the beginning of the fiscal year. For the city attorney's office, we're, of course, defending several million in claims. For the information technology department, um, annual fees for various software lease and maintenance agreements. Um, for the engineering department, annual payment to Motorola for radio maintenance. For the tax assistance office, it is the vendor payments for the tax notices and overtime. For the Muskogee County Prison, um, it's the prisoner medical contract that was encumbered. For the Superior Court Judges, we encumbered the court reporter services. Um, as you know, the court reporters receive a certain amount of money every year for things that are outside of their normal contract. For the jury manager, there was, um, there's a subscription due at the beginning of the fiscal year for the jury summons, um, as well as the, um, paid jury fees. And for the sheriff's office, the prisoner medical contract was encumbered. So those are the departments that are currently over the twenty-five percent threshold. Um, in regards to the TAM, we have not had to draw down any additional monies except the initial, initial fifty thousand that we were required by law to take. And so I will keep you updated as we go along as far as the, any drawdowns with the TAM. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions if you have them.
Uh, we have the Mayor Protem has a question related to transfers.
What are transfers? What, um, on the OLOS?
Right. So the transfers on the OLOS are for the, for things like cost allocation.
Okay.
Um, debt service. Um, hang on just a second.
That's good enough.
Oh, okay.
Okay. We've got, um, got Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Alexander, um, two things. One is, um, as quickly as you can, would you post the OLOS figures on the website? I have people ask me about these all the time. And it's very helpful to be able to say to them, go to the city website. On the city website, you can find the OLOS figures. Um, and, um, I think the latest one that's on there is August. So September's, you know, it takes, I know it takes a while to get all these numbers put together. And, and so if you'll, if you will, um, do that as quickly as you can.
They are out there.
And, um, the other thing that I would ask, I know that you do this so we'll have a one-pager. But there's a lot of information on this page, and it's difficult to read sometimes.
Okay.
Would you think about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's it. Okay.
And I don't know if you heard me, but the OLOS finance page has been updated. So the current reports are out there. The September reports are out there. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, we're gonna move to open enrollment, and then our final will be-
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Simeon.
Sure.
I knew there was something else I wanted to ask.
Ms. Alexander, if I could, I'm sorry. Um, do you have any idea about, um, the kitchen at the jail, how they're doing? Are they, um-
Well, I-
I don't know if that's Ms. Alexander or-
Well, um, we are going to come to you with an update at the very next meeting. In fact-
That's good.
We wanted the sheriff to come today, but our schedule would not allow.
That's okay.
So she's, didn't she confirm for the next meeting?
She confirmed.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Simeon.
Our finding, uh, excuse me, HR Director Rita Hollowell is gonna talk about open enrollment.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I wanted to provide you a very brief update and review of open enrollment for two thousand eighteen. Open enrollment for two thousand eighteen, we did a three-week stint for open enrollment that started October the second, and we went through October the twentieth. We were able to, um, be in fourteen locations throughout the city so that it was as convenient as possible for employees at various times during the day. Uh, to culminate open enrollment, we had a health and benefits fair on October the twentieth at the Trade Center, which was well-attended. Our open enrollment was conducted by our benefit consultant, Shaw Hankins, and we've gotten a extremely good reviews from the work that they did and the service that they provided for us. Our open enrollment activity, we had nine hundred and twenty-six employees complete open enrollment. Two thousand eight hundred and eighty-five did not. That included all of our active employees and all of our retirees. Three hundred and twenty-one of those employees completed online enrollment. Uh, five sixty-eight completed it with an enroller, meaning that they made an appointment. They went and sat with someone and talked about their benefits, and then they enrolled at that time. Then we had thirty-seven employees that completed it by calling the one eight hundred call center number and speaking with a representative and completed open enrollment there. I will say that these numbers are indicative of what happens during open enrollment. Uh, last year, we had a very busy season in terms of we had a lot of plan design changes. This year, there were not those kinds of plan designs changes. So, uh, it was very minimum in terms of, uh, open enrollment. And I'll share a couple of brief things here with you about why I think, you know, participation was probably slow or low. One of the things we also wanted to do is make sure that employees knew as much as possible about their benefits. Uh, we launched an education effort and to making, make sure employees were aware, they knew exactly what their benefits were, they had a chance to, uh, see them in different ways. We also launched a Facebook page, Human Resources Department, where we, a lot of folks like social media, and they like to be able to access things via social media. So we have a Facebook page where we post all of our open enrollment information. We also have developed videos, our benefit consultant did. And so we track, you know, how many people are looking at the videos, you know, how many times they're looking at them. And so we provided an open enrollment, uh, video, which just gave a real big picture summary of everything open enrollment. We had specific videos about our medical benefit, dental plan, vision, and life insurance. And, and this just shows how many times, uh, employees actually went out and looked at those videos. And then just to review the actual benefit itself, uh, our medical benefit, thankfully, there is no premium increase for two thousand eighteen. And that, I'm sure, account for the low participation in open enrollment. Many employees will say, I'll just keep what I've got. So they were able to do that. If they decided they were satisfied with what they had in two thousand seventeen, they could keep the same thing in two thousand eighteen. So there's no medical premium increase. Whatever the premium that employees are paying in two thousand seventeen, they'll pay the same thing in two thousand eighteen. There is an increase in the emergency room. If you're on the silver plan, there is a co-insurance of twenty percent. If you're on the gold plan, there's a co-insurance pay of ten percent. There is a slight increase in the urgent care co-pay from forty dollars to sixty dollars. And on our pharmacy, uh, we have added tiers to our pharmacy. We've got the standard three-tier pharmacy, two tiers that are being added for two thousand eighteen. A tier for specialty, there's a co-pay there, and then there's a tier for lifestyle medications. On our dental and vision plans, there is no premium increase there. There's also no premium increase in our basic life and voluntary. Um, telemedicine benefit, you all recall that we added that benefit in two thousand seventeen at the request of a number of our employees and recommendation of our employee benefits committee. That benefit, there's a slight decrease on that particular benefit, where it's currently six dollars and ninety-nine cents a month. It'll be reduced to six dollars and twelve cents a month. Then we are offering the flexible spending account and voluntary benefits offered through Aflac. So now, just to talk real, real briefly, and I'm not gonna spend any time in great detail with a lot of these slides, but if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. In terms of medical elections, our active employees, again, this is somewhat boring because there's not a whole lot of activity. Sixteen on our active employees, sixteen added coverage, twelve dropped coverage, and forty-six made a plan change design. And you see on the pre-sixty-five retirees, three added coverage, nobody dropped coverage. And on the post-sixty-five retirees, one added coverage and four dropped coverage. And then this just shows the enrollment by plan. Um, in terms of our active employees on the silver plan, there are sixteen hundred and seventy-seven employees on the silver plan, three hundred and eighteen on the gold plan. If you look down below the pre-sixty-five on the silver plan, there are a hundred and seventy-three, and then thirty-five on the gold plan. Our dental elections, uh, again, very low activity there in terms of adding and dropping. Typically, the same number that adds is similar to the same number that drops. Our dental participation, you see that sixty-nine percent of the employees take advantage of the, of the dental plan. Thirty-four percent of pre-sixty-five retirees are on the dental plan, and eleven percent of, uh, post-sixty-five retirees. There are six hundred and ninety-three employees, active employees, on the high plan, the high dental plan. And then a thousand forty-four of those employees participate in the low dental plan. And you see retirees, we got a hundred and five on the high plan, and then there are a hundred and fourteen on the low plan. Our vision, uh, participation for our employees, again, not a whole lot of activity there. Active employees, fifty-nine percent of our employees participate in the active, excuse me, participate in the vision plan. The active employees do thirty-three percent of pre-sixty-five retirees. And then ten percent of our post-sixty-five retirees participate in the vision plan. And then, of course, we're offering for those employees that voluntarily and want to participate in the flexible spending account, a hundred and forty-two employees did participate in the health spending account. That is a little bit up from two thousand seventeen, forty-seven added it and fifty-nine dropped it. There's also the, two types of flexible spending account. The healthcare flexible spending account and the dependent care flexible spending account. And you see the activity there. Telemedicine, as I mentioned it earlier, we've got a hundred and forty-nine employees that are enrolled for two thousand eighteen for that particular benefit. Thirty-nine added the, the coverage, and thirty people dropped it. I do want to mention the tobacco cessation. That is the surcharge, tobacco surcharge that we brought back. You all may have remember that. We had a tobacco surcharge some years ago and dropped it. So we started the tobacco surcharge again, beginning in two thousand eighteen. There is a fifty-dollar-a-month surcharge that applies to those tobacco users who do not complete a tobacco cessation- a tobacco cessation program. There are two tobacco cessation programs that are offered, and we started offering those programs. They are free of charge to the employees. We started offering those programs in September, the Fresh Start Program, and then the Quit Program offered by Georgia and Alabama. There are 1,995 employees on the, that are on the plan for 2018. So those are the number of affidavits that we need to receive back from employees that they are stating that they either use tobacco or they don't use tobacco. So since we started that process, 80% of those employees have completed a tobacco affidavit form stating whether they either use it or don't use it. Of those, of those 80%, 90% have indicated that they do not use tobacco and 10% have identified themselves as using tobacco. And of course, they have an opportunity to complete one of the cessation programs and avoid the $50 surcharge. The last program I want to mention is the wellness incentive that was put forth by the Employee Benefits Committee. The wellness incentive encourages employees to utilize or participate and complete a personal health assessment. And if they are deemed to be at risk, participate in coaching. And participating in the personal health assessment, employees have an opportunity to receive two wellness days or, and a $50 gift card for the first 400 employees that participated. And I will tell you that our, the personal health assessment, our wellness incentive is going extremely well. We know that at least 400 employees have already participated in the personal health assessment, and we want that number to continue to increase. We'll have, we'll report back on the number of employees participating, but that particular program is going extremely well, so we're real pleased with the results there. And that's all I have, Mr. City Manager.
We have Counselor Allen.
Hollowell, how many employees do we have?
Active employees, 3,000, roughly.
I was just curious about the, I think it was the first slide you put up. If I, if my math was correct, it looked like enrollment was 3801 or something like that?
In terms of total enrollment?
Yeah, I think it was the first slide.
Hmm, I'm sorry. Here.
Now, I was adding the first two, 926 and 2885. Those that completed the enrollment and did not complete the enrollment.
Right, right. The 2885 includes all active employees that are eligible for the plan, all retirees. That's our pre-65 and post-65.
Okay.
That's how we come up with that number.
That's where we get it.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, I have the final update. It's the CCG Columbus Consolidated Government Web Presence update by IT Director Forrest Toley.
I don't know if it's evening or still morning, but.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon. I've been asked to kind of give an update on the web presence, and I wanted to start with what I came to you with, my initial assessment back in March of 15, when we talked about, at this meeting, increasing our data center capacities, improve our web presence, and improve the business resources and some other things. So part of the plan originally, and still is, is to always improve on our web presence. When James Garrity, an intern, I guess, for Mr. Hugler came in, one of the things he was asked to help do was to go over some suggestions for our web presence. And he made some recommendations working with the IT department. And I'm going to go over what we're doing to try to help improve our web presence and our web stability. So one thing we're working on is to make it all cloud-based. Cloud-based means that we won't host it here. And one thing that that means is, right now, if you host all of your stuff here, that means all the traffic comes here. So that means you need more actual bandwidth. You're also more susceptible for some of the denial of service attacks you hear about that bring down cities. Well, if they hit the website and it's off-premises, then, of course, they'd be attacking Microsoft sites and they won't actually be attacking city sites. So that helps the security, plus being on the web itself. The Azure that we use, the Microsoft platform we use, is actually government Azure, so it's actually made for enhanced security features. Minimum downtime, Azure or the cloud is up, you would say 99.99% of the time. We would be down by scheduled maintenance or if we did accidentally upload it, something that broke our site. Lower maintenance costs, you know, when I first got here, we had to spend upwards to several million dollars with a lot of equipment and stuff. One of the things that you do when you move cloud-based is this is a subscription model and over time, actually short time, you save money by not having to buy new equipment. So each time now that we would need a web server or web servers or web services, we have to go out and purchase new actual computers in the data center, but now we don't have to do that. And increased availability, that means two things. It's not just downtime, but increased availability means that if we were out, if we were cut, we, if we lost service as a city, you could still get to our website. Because the website is on the cloud, so if you have cloud connectivity through your home internet or through your phone, you would still be able to get to those services. We also are moving, one of the recommendations is to move to a .gov. Right now, it's columbusga.org. And .gov, and I'm going to start at the bottom, it's reserved for governments. And it actually adds another layer of security. A lot of the things we do, since we don't have a .gov, we actually have to send a letter and say, hey, we really are the city of Columbus and we really can register for this thing. So the .gov gives us some more security features, plus it's recognizable. It's search engine recognizable. It's kind of more, has a better reputation, and it just increases the professionalism of the city when you go move to a .gov account. It's slightly more expensive than the other accounts, but it still gives us a better web presence. So we're thinking, but we're not 100% positive that we would go to columbusga.gov. And that would give us a change in some of our email addresses too, but your current email addresses will still work. Another thing that we're working on is the uniformity of design. This has nothing to do really with moving it to the cloud. It really has to do with, we want the website more user-friendly. We've had it looked at by several groups and internally, and we actually sent out to all the directors and department heads some looks and feels. And we want to kind of get a consistency of design so it's easy navigation. The two exceptions would be the Parks and Rec and the Civic Center, but all the other sites, we wanted to kind of look the same so that when you're on the city side, it kind of flows. Increased maintainability. If you have a uniformed design that you have actually a database back behind the scenes, it makes it easier to maintain. So I have two staff members that do this. They stay slightly behind. This should make it easier to maintain. Improved user experience. Basically, the new website will fit on your mobile, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But it also, the user experiences are better if you can find what you want to easier, fewer clicks to get where you want to go. And we'll have some enhanced search features. And basically, that means that you will be able to search the site and find, hopefully, what you're looking for just by keyword search rather than not being able to search the entire site today. Performance with a data content behind the scenes, you'll have better performance. One thing we can do is automate so that everywhere the city manager appears, or a council member appears, or the mayor appears, you really only have the data set one time and you just publish it several times. And it makes the website a lot easier as far as finding your data, maintaining your data, and accessing your data. Mobile-friendly means that you can go to your phone, and we have a couple websites that you can today, a couple, and one of them is the CCG TV page. So if you go to CCG TV on your phone, you'll see that it fits on your phone, makes it easy to watch council meetings on your phone because it's mobile-enabled. So that means it kind of shrinks to the screen that you're looking at. If you're on your tablet, it's a little bit bigger. If you're on your computer, it's, it's a little bit different. But all of your services are there. So rather than go to like an app approach, everybody says, well, they want an app. You really don't need an app if you make your website mobile-friendly so that it appears to be an app when you look at it on your phone, but it appears to be a website if you look at it on your tablet or your computer. And like I said, we're going to integrate it with the employee HR system and all the other systems. We have it integrated with, right now, it's integrated, but we do a manual process to, because we're still in the process of getting our systems in place. It's also integrated with GIS mappings during Irma. We put the front page, we had a banner screen on the front page so that citizens and the city people could look, see where trees were down, roads were closed. That's available all the time on the website, but by being able to put it on the front page and pull that data, it made it a lot easier for people to respond. So that's kind of the integration piece. The, and I'm going to try the next slide, or at least get some help on it. One thing I want to talk about on this, this is what we sent out to the directors to look at. And it doesn't have the new logo. The website currently has the new logo. The reason this one doesn't is because we were a few weeks before the release, we had the logo, but we were asked not to put it on the sample pages because we didn't want a pre-release before the people had got to come to council and talk about it. So we do have the logo on the current website, but that's why it's not on the sample, because we didn't want to kind of give it away early. And if none of the, none of this site works except to show you the look, because we asked the directors, the department heads, what's kind of look and feel you want? So if you would scroll down for me, Shane. So it goes down, so you've got popular resources, you could click on those, you can scroll down more. It has meeting and news, it talks about Dragonfly Trail, tax information, meeting dates, you can go to all events. Right now, that doesn't work because, like I said, these links we made so they wouldn't work, so they, we're just trying to get a feel. Then we have the mayor, city manager, council. And it scrolls through and it would actually be very similar to the information, but it's presented in a different way. If you scroll down a little bit further, you see a GIS map of park locations, election districts, and they just come in live. So those are live, this site, this part is live coming out of the system. So if you were to have an emergency and you wanted to show where trees were down, roads were closed, you had a flood, you could put it, actually, you could just add another button and say, for emergency, you could make it red and say, here are, you know, things that are going on with Irma or things that are going on in the city right now with our GIS services. So you could actually get all those data points live. And then towards the bottom, it's just typical of what you would see about the website. So that is pretty much my presentation. We do have a couple pictures that you just saw live. So that is one of the pictures of the front page. As we go down, you can see the different things that are available. And one of the things that, that the recommendation was, is that the front page should contain mostly government information, and it should just be a scroll-down, quick look, important information, and that's what we're moving towards. So in addition to trying to make it user-friendly, look more appealing, we also are moving the, where it's hosted, to make it more secure, more reliable, and more user-friendly. Any questions?
I think that's it. Forrest, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, I have two announcements.
Okay.
The first one is Veterans Day observance. It's Friday, November 10th, for the Columbus Consolidated Government and this community and the nation. There's no pickup, garbage pickup, garbage collection on Friday, November 10th. There will be no garbage collection on Friday, November 10th. Friday routes will be collected Wednesday, November 8th. And so no, no collection on Friday the 10th, Wednesday the 8th. So if you receive your pickup on Friday, you will put it out for Wednesday collection. Nothing else will change. All other services will be provided on their normal collection day. So Friday, Veterans Day, garbage collection will be on Wednesday, November 8th. I just want to repeat that a few times. So you know if your garbage is collected on Friday, put it out Wednesday. So that's the announcement for that.
Which day is the city closed, Mayor Portem?
On Friday, November 10th, Veterans Day. The city of Columbus will be closed except for emergency and essential services. And so there will be no garbage collection on that day. We'll pick it up two days prior to Friday, the 10th, on November 8th.
Okay.
The second announcement.
Wait, Mayor Portem had a question, I believe.
I'm sorry.
Can we, you know how you send out those phone calls?
Yes, the cold red.
Can we put that out on those calls?
We can.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right.
We'll do a cold red.
We have Counselor Barnes?
No, no, it's another.
Oh, okay.
We've had a number of council members to mention citizens' calls with concerns with coyotes. We've received quotes, we've selected a vendor. The vendor we've selected is Jarrods, J-A-R-R-O-D-S. We are scheduled to spend about $1,800, $1,800. And that number could go up, of course, depending on the number of coyotes. But the cost, the $1,800, includes trapping in Green Island Hills and the Heath Park area. If there are other areas that we need to know about, we ask council members or citizens to let us know. The work will start this week, and they will monitor daily for the next four to six weeks. The next four to six weeks, starting this week, Green Island Hills and the Heath Park areas. Jarrods is the vendor. So if you see someone out in those areas, know that they are out working for the city of Columbus in that effort. Madam Mayor, that concludes the work session agenda for today.
Okay. We have Counselor Barnes.
Yes. Mayor, city manager, and council. Pat Bigler needs to be commended for the columbarium. She called me on the phone, I was absent that. When she called to remind me, she said, I know you weren't at council. For her to recognize that, that there was an issue, I think she really needs to be commended in some way. This, the word has spread, and it was a fantastic article in the, in the paper. For her to recognize that some of the indigent burials were veterans and just to realize how important it is, and to make that connection, because I talked to some of the military organizations here, to make that connection that, yes, if a family member does not know that a veteran has expired, that veteran would not be accorded the honors that, that do veterans. So she really needs to be commended for that. And then the mission continues, that all. And then the mission continues, that organization, for the work that they put in at the Riverdale. And I notified some of the American Legions, 267, 333, and going to the DAV-7 here to make sure that they will have individuals there. But I think it's phenomenal for the city to be doing something like that, but for her to recognize that it was, as an issue, is what's really, is what really stands out, that she recognized the connection. Because I talked to some of the other military, say, "You know, we, I hadn't thought about it." So she, something needs to be done, because that is extremely special. And for her to have done the research, and I think she has, what is it, 40 urns?
I don't know the number, but, yeah.
For her to go through the, and find out and identify ones, I think is really superb. So something needs to be...
Well, you could do a resolution for, Counselor.
I do want to. And I, and that's one reason why I would like to do that, because that, that was really a wake-up call of a situation that will not be happening in this city again. So yes, could you give me all the information, because I would like to do something.
Yeah. You want the city attorney to...
Yes. Because that is something that has really impacted the military community as far as the significance of it. Because regardless of what the veteran's situation may have been, they need to be accorded some type of, what every veteran, the rights that every veteran receives. And so that's, that's why it's impactful somewhere. And also say that on Friday the 10th will be the Veterans Banquet at the St. Luke Ministry Center. That following Saturday will be, the Veterans Day Parade starts at 10:00. I know Mike always makes it there, Mike Baker always. And right following the parade at the Phoenix City Amphitheater, we're having the first annual veterans rally at the Phoenix City. And it'll be about between 12:30 and 1:00. We will have free food and water. We will also have service officers from the various organizations for any of the veterans that may be having a problem with their benefits. And we will have a number, and we've just finalized, we will have a number of church choirs there, four, I believe, there for entertainment and whatever. And so we'd like for everybody to come out.
All right. We have the Mayor Protim.
I agree with you, Pops, Counselor Lawrence. And I was really moved by the story in the paper. And I thought it was real good, they're using money for selling brick pavers to have fun to upkeep and some of the, on some of that project. And I think it would be wonderful if each one of the counselors would buy a favor, and only $75. And I was going, I was hoping I would see Miss Beigler today to ask if they have some kind of flyers we can get out about the brick pavers. Because I think it's real, it's going to a worthwhile cause.
And one other great thing that Pat Beigler has done, and we had recently, is the Up and Motivated Conference for our supervisors and managers, mid-level managers. And she was able to fundraise and bring Herschel Walker in as a speaker for that conference. And it was an excellent conference, and it really helped supervisors and the lower-level to mid-level managers attend and professional development courses, you know. And Pat Beigler founded that to reduce the level of travel and training for various employees. And that's her program that she founded, and, and we just finished that conference. And so she's to be commended for that as well.
And can you also get somebody to check to see if there are some national awards that we can apply for from the citizen sector on her project?
Sure. Yeah, we'll do that.
All right. We've got some great employees. We're very fortunate.
And Madam Mayor, we've covered a lot of topics today, and we were able to get through them. I didn't know that we would be able to finish today, but thank you.
Well, thank you. A good work session. And that concludes our agenda. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please state aye.